It's working. Well, according to this clock, it is nine o'clock, and so we shall commence this very first Commissioners' Court meeting of the new year 2019. And at this time, I would like to call for the invocation which shall be given by Pastor, sometimes Pastor and friend, Joseph Ramidis.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. It's an honor to be here on this historic day here in Oasis County. This morning, I want to bring an invocation about leadership, starting with a quote, "He who has learned to obey will know how to command." The book of Proverbs in 10:8 tells us, "The wise in heart accept commands, but a chattering fool will come to ruins." In the 11th century, King Henry III of Bavaria became tired of his responsibilities as king, the pressures of international politics, and the mundane worldliness of court life. He made an application to Prior Richard at a local monastery to be accepted as a contemplative, to spend the rest of his life in prayer and meditation there. Prior Richard responded, "Your Majesty, do you understand that the pledge here is one of obedience, and that will be hard since you are a king?" "I understand," Henry said, "the rest of my life I will be obedient to you as Christ leads you." Richard responded, "Then I will tell you what to do. Go back to your throne and serve faithfully in the place where God has put you." After King Henry died, the statement was written in his honor, "The king learned to rule by being obedient." Each of us ultimately obeys either the righteous commandments of our Heavenly Father or the rule of lawlessness. We must willingly choose to put ourselves under authority, including the authority of God. To fail to do so is to have no law other than our own whim, and that's an unreliable source at its best. Heavenly Father, we're here today, and thank you for the leadership here that we have in the Commissioners' Court. We pray that you give them wisdom. We pray that you lead them in the right way for our county. We pray for our nation. We pray for a prosperous 2019. We ask that you oversee every employee here in Oasis County as they do your work, as they serve as people, as they serve the people of this community. We ask that you watch their health. We ask that you protect them as they travel this big county here of Oasis County. We ask that you bring peace in 2019, that you bring compromise, that you bring prosperity to us here in Oasis County. We pray this in your name, Heavenly Father, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And Judge, those minutes have been passed out earlier by the county clerk, just for your information.
Thank you so much. And now, according to the agenda, I'm going to call roll. Note the date, time, and location of today's meeting, and I'm going to certify that a quorum is present. And even though I can see left and right, everybody is here, I think that the decorum is lovely. So Commissioner Carolyn Vaughn, Commissioner John Modis, Commissioner Joe A. Gonzalez, Commissioner Brent Chesney.
Here.
And of course, we are here at the Oasis County Courthouse, Commissioners' Court, third floor, 901 Leopard in Corpus Christi, and I do certify that a quorum is present, and we are officially in order. And now, we will approve the minutes for December 5, 2018, and also December 12, 2018. And Commissioners, these were passed out to you for your review.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. So having those minutes approved, Tyner, are there any more minutes that need to be considered at this time?
No, that's all, Judge.
And so now, we'll move to adopt resolutions, any proclamations or orders. And the first one is quite special for me and also personal, so I look forward to...
And Judge, we may have some people in the audience that may want to come forward on this item, just to stand with me.
Yes. The court recognizes Cecilia Akers, her husband Jim Akers, Dr. Hector P. Garcia's daughter and son-in-law, and also my father, Tony Canales, is in the audience and nephew to Dr. Hector.
I'll proceed, Judge.
Please do.
Whereas Hector P. Garcia was born on January 17, 1914, in Yarra, a small town in Tamaulipas, Mexico, and later came to reside in Mercedes, Texas, as a small child when his parents fled the Mexican Revolution in 1917. Whereas after graduating valedictorian of Mercedes High School, Hector P. Garcia attended Edinburgh Junior College and went on to graduate from the University of Texas Medical Branch Galveston in 1940. Whereas Hector P. Garcia served in the United States Army as an infantryman, a combat engineer, and a medical doctor during World War II, and earned the Bronze Star Medal for his distinguished service. Whereas in 1946, Dr. Hector P. Garcia settled in Corpus Christi and opened his private medical practice. Whereas Dr. Hector P. Garcia, founder of the American GI Forum, dedicated his life to the aid and improvement of the quality of life for Mexican-Americans and fought to bring attention to the Mexican-American civil rights movement through the American GI Forum, to fight for equal treatment of Mexican-American veterans, including proper medical treatment and educational benefits. Whereas in 1949, Dr. Hector P. Garcia secured a burial with full military honors at Arlington National Cemetery for Private Felix Longoria after a Texas funeral home in Three Rivers, Texas refused to hold a wake for Private Longoria, a U.S. soldier killed during World War II for the sole reason he was Hispanic. Whereas in 1967, Dr. Hector P. Garcia was appointed by President Lyndon B. Johnson as the first American to serve as an ambassador to the United Nations, and the following year, the first Hispanic to serve on the United States Commission on Civil Rights. Whereas Dr. Hector P. Garcia received numerous recognitions, awards, and accolades throughout his long distinguished career, but most noted, in 1984, Dr. Garcia received the Presidential Medal of Freedom, presented to him by President Ronald Reagan for his service to his people and the United States. This is the highest award a civilian can receive. He was the first Mexican-American to receive this honor. Whereas Dr. Hector P. Garcia devoted his life for the pursuit of social justice and educational access for Mexican-Americans and dedicated his life for the less fortunate and gave so much of himself for this community and country. Whereas January 17, 2019 would have been Dr. Hector P. Garcia's 105th birthday. Now therefore, join me in honoring and celebrating the life of Dr. Hector P. Garcia, a selfless physician, decorated World War II veteran, dedicated family man, and civil rights hero who was known for the legacy he leaves behind of generosity and commitment to the quality of life for us to follow.
Thank you, Tyner. Cecilia, would you like to make some comments?
Well, thank you so much for recognizing. It just brings tears to my eyes to hear all the wonderful things that y'all said about my father, but the best way we can honor him is to continue his legacy, so no one will ever forget his struggles and what his accomplishments were for this entire country. Thank you so much for having us here this morning. Thanks.
Thank you.
Judge, move acceptance.
Having heard a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I'll take a point of personal privilege here and say that I can't believe so much time has passed since those days Cecilia and Dad, from when I was at the American GI Forum banquet, those long, drawn-out banquets, where my partner sitting next to me was none other than Judge Bob Barnes. I remember him cracking jokes and sitting with me, and who could have known then that I would once then occupy his spot here at the county courthouse? It seems almost surreal. But the truth is, is that Dr. Hector had a way of teaching even when you were a young girl, and you're right, his legacy endures. And I want to remind the audience that in this legislative session, the number-one priority for the Texas A&amp;M University here at Corpus Christi is an arts and media building for which the first floor shall be dedicated to Dr. Hector's memory artifacts, memorabilia, and that's something that we as citizens here in Oasis County need to make sure that we are in complete support of because it's a wonderful addition to the university and an important tribute to an icon. So, thank you for being here. And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And the motion carries.
I'm sorry?
A photo?
Do a photo?
Sure. And let me just share with the audience that I'm recovering from the flu this weekend. What a lovely present after my swearing-in. And so I'm going to ask your pardon, and if you will come to me, I will not infect anybody. My fever broke this weekend, and so therefore, according to the doctors, I'm not contagious.
You heard that before.
I'm only two days away from my ideal weight, however. I haven't eaten anything, but I got this.
How do I do this?
Can I? And I won't block anybody?
No.
Okay.
We'll stand.
Okay.
You are. I'm getting too close to it. Want to hold the certificate up?
Yes, I can, absolutely. And this has been signed?
Yes, it's ready.
Thank you, Cecilia. I'm sorry. I don't want to get anybody... This is God's way of humbling me, taking a little bit of the fire and pouring a little water on it, just cooling me down. Tyner, would you proceed to the Martin Luther King Celebration and Commemorative Resolution?
I sure will. And there are some people that may want to stand with me. Marcia, group? Dr. Gloria Scott.
Alexis Williams, I'm the chapter president.
Alexis Williams.
Chapter president.
Chapter president.
Yes.
Marcia, Dr. Gloria Scott. I'll proceed, Judge. Whereas each year in the month of January, the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., comes together to commemorate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and because this celebration march reminds us of our interdependence and reaffirms Delta Sigma Theta Sorority's commitment to the betterment of our communities through civility and service. Whereas Dr. King was quoted as saying, "The function of education is to teach and to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." And because the women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority want to use their collective strength to promote academic excellence, provide scholarships, and offer support to the underserved, educate and stimulate participation in the establishment of positive public policy, highlight issues, and provide solutions for problems in their community. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter, will be participating in the 2019 Martin Luther King Holiday Celebration and Commemorative March on January 21, 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Oasis County Commissioners' Court hereby declares January 21, 2019 as the Martin Luther King Holiday Celebration and Commemorative March, and further encourages the citizens of Oasis County to join Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated on this spectacular occasion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Would you like, or Dr. Scott, either one? Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Alexis Williams. I am the chapter president of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority here, of the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter. We cannot express how happy and excited and blessed that we are that you have welcomed us here today. And this marks the 33rd year that we have done this annual commemorative march, and we are just overjoyed that you all have welcomed us here. I would like to also add that on that, and I'm just recovering from the flu myself, so...
You sympathize.
Yes, I sympathize, yes. On that Sunday, the 20th of January, we will be having an interfaith service at Brooks Chapel, and we have different religious groups that are going to be participating to honor the legacy and the life of Dr. Martin Luther King. And then also too, on that Monday, as we specify, we will be having the march that will begin at City Hall, excuse me, at the county courthouse, and it will end at...
Episcopal Church of the Good Shepherd.
Episcopal Church of the Good Shepherd. So just thank you again, and we just call all of you all, you morning, welcome to participate. And Dr. Scott has some words as well.
Thank you.
Good morning, Court and audience. I always honor this salute to Martin Luther King because of my thanks are going up and down my back right now because I was present at the Lorraine Hotel for another group the day that Martin Luther King was killed. And we've worked very closely with Corrada Scott King throughout the time that I've been involved, and so this is very special, and I certainly appreciate the fact that Oasis County continues to recognize, and we hope that you will all join us in the celebration of his life on January.
Thank you. Judge, move passage.
Yes. Let's do the passage first, and then we'll take a picture.
Did she want to speak?
Would you like to say anything?
I'm retired.
Oh, okay.
And tired.
But yet, you're here.
Good answer, good answer.
Yeah, you kept saying you were going to retire.
Commissioner Chesney, do you move? Are you moving?
Yes, ma'am.
And second by Commissioner Gonzalez. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And so the resolution passes, and it is a wonderful month, isn't it? It just, it really is. And I hope that my schedule allows to be there with you not only for the interfaith service on the 20th, but the Commemorative March on the 21st. And I'd like to add that I might call on Cecilia to help me remember, but does my memory serve me correctly? There might have been a Western Union telegram between Dr. King and Dr. Hector that the archives have, and that's something that our community really should understand, that can you only imagine if the day was today where they would have had modern technology to have communicated with one another. But sadly, Dr. King passed away, but that telegram exists, and these two great icons of civil rights, both working in very different arenas, but yet, same philosophy, the same values, the same just legacy, is just really, it's humbling. So anyway, we look forward to the celebration. And if you would join us on the platform behind us, we'll take your picture. And do you have a resolution for me? Okay. Got it. It's funny because this pen just went out too.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Let me borrow another pen. This one just went out. Oh, wait, here's one. We're going to sign for you so you have an official copy.
Yes, thank you. I know it said it will be emailed to us when we get a copy.
I believe you will.
Yes, thank you.
Just take that, it's okay.
Here you go.
Sign here.
I'll take it.
We'll hold this one up. Don't we? Delta Sig and...
Here, here you go.
Well, now they took away the, we're just going to hold this one up then. Okay.
So how do we?
Get in the front.
Dr. Scott, you can be seen?
In the back, get next to her.
You can get beside me, Dr. Scott.
There you go.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Okay.
One, two, three.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank y'all so much.
We'll have one ready in just a few minutes. It's ready.
Tyner, I know we have a particular piece that's not on the agenda, the retirement celebration?
We still have two more resolutions, Judge.
Okay, so you want to do that after resolutions? I just wanted to remind you. Okay. So the next resolution regarding the Port of Corpus Christi?
That's correct, and I believe there's a couple of people here that are here if the court needs some more information.
I think that would be appropriate at this time.
Okay. I think Jeff is here, and Nelda. Anybody else? Y'all just want to sit for now until, okay. I made a very, we and the judge made a very minor change on Friday, and I did email that version out, and then we just now passed out this version. And I'd like to go ahead and read it.
Please do.
Whereas Trifigura Group Limited and its subsidiary, Texas Gulf Terminals Incorporated, collectively, Trifigura, I'll try my best with that word, excuse me, proposed to build the Texas Gulf Terminals Project, which would load supertankers, known as very large crude carriers, via a single-point mooring buoy outside the Texas coastal waters without involvement by the Port of Corpus Christi and beyond the reach and jurisdiction of the state and local officials who regulate and protect the public. Whereas Trifigura has applied for a deep-water port license for the Texas Gulf Terminals Project from the United States Maritime Administration and United States Coast Guard under the Federal Deepwater Ports Act, the application. Whereas the circumvention of the Port of Corpus Christi Authority and of the state of Texas sovereignty and subsequent regulatory oversight creates risk to the environment, air quality, and security of the citizens of Texas and our communities' economic development. Whereas there have been over 200 deficiencies noted in the application by numerous federal agencies, including United States Fish and Wildlife Service, United States Army Corps of Engineers, United States Coast Guard, Environmental Protection Agency, and Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement, which was created post-deep-water horizon to prevent another environmental disaster. Whereas Texas state and local governments are being denied access to sufficient information about the risks posed by the Texas Gulf Terminals Project and will not have the statutory authority to require compliance with the Texas laws that could mitigate risks. Whereas the proposed Texas Gulf Terminals Project operations do not include measures such as vapor recovery of volatile organic compounds that are followed within Port of Corpus Christi jurisdiction. The estimated 85 tons per vessel of VOCs that will be emitted from Texas Gulf Terminals Project may adversely impact Corpus Christi's air attainment status. The $50 billion of private capital invested in the region over the last decade and the overall quality of life here in South Texas coastal bend are due in part to our favorable air attainment status. Whereas an alternative to the Texas Gulf Terminals Project, the Port of Corpus Christi's Harbor Island Project, an onshore terminal capable of loading VLCC tankers is underway, under the full regulatory weight of state agencies, and this project is safer and far more sustainable, a far more sustainable alternative and will directly benefit Texas communities. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Oasis County Commissioners' Court that expansion of energy export capabilities is vital to the economic prosperity of the state of Texas, but it must be accomplished in a responsible manner. And further, the court formally opposes Texas Gulf Terminals Project and requests that the Governor of Texas ultimately disapprove said project, and that this resolution of opposition be made part of the permanent minutes of Commissioners' Court.
Judge, may I make comment?
Yes.
First, let me say that I sent an email to the city of Port Aransas asking the city manager their position, and I had moved the table this, the last meeting, I think, was the last meeting. Wanted to wait for you to get here, and two, to get some input from the city of Port Aransas. And they, the city manager sent me back an email yesterday or today, I can't see the date on it, that said that the city of Port Aransas does not support the Trifigura project because the fumes will have a direct impact on their community. My only question on this, so I am in support of this resolution, but my only question is, sorry, I know, I've been there. So my only question is, my, all my only issue on this is, is including the Harbor Island Project as part of this resolution because I think we are confusing a little bit in the sense that these are two very separate projects of which we as a county can have no effect, as I've been told, on the Harbor Island Project because it's private property, because there are permits in hand, and because it's moving forward. There has been some attempt to combine these projects in Port Aransas by some, and I don't really necessarily want to add to that confusion. So I am 100% in support of opposing the Trifigura program, but I would really like to have the court consider taking out the language regarded, related to Harbor Island, if that's possible, if there's no objection, because it has been a very confusing issue trying to separate these projects as it is and putting this in a resolution. I think possibly further confuses.
Is there a reason why they're together?
One way you could do that is take out the entire last whereas.
Right. I'd like to hear from anybody else before I defer to the Port of Corpus Christi to make some comments.
I just have a question. Let's just, I'm not saying if I'm for or against it, I'm just asking this question because it's not regulated by the state. Will it be regulated by federal?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Pollak, Director of Planning for the Port of Corpus Christi. The permanent application process runs through Mayrad. Federal controls of pollutants, air quality in particular, are very different than state control. So outside of TCQ's jurisdiction, there essentially the lot of high seas will permit open gassing of all emissions from all VOCs from transferring of crude to vessels at that location 13 miles offshore.
Can I, I need to ask a point of parliamentary here. I apologize, and it's my fault. I think we were supposed to have a motion on the table before we discussed.
We are.
So that's my fault for jumping too fast. So I think we need to put a motion on the table first, if that's right, I think. That's my fault, I'm sorry. So I would move a passage of this motion, but then would like to discuss. I'm sorry, Judge, that's my fault.
And there's a second. And so now I'm going to call for discussion, and now we're in the right spot. Sorry about that, Jeff.
It's my fault.
So you're saying there is some federal regulation, but it's not going to be as great as the state would be?
There is a federal permitting process.
Okay.
By comparison, the full environmental impact statement for this project, which for the equivalent project in state jurisdiction would be a multi-year application, is about a four-month process when it's run through Mayrad. The degree of environmental control is just, it's apples to oranges in terms of comparison.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's in federal waters.
So I think it might be good just to, if you would, Jeff, kind of go over the, maybe some of the top points. I think this is a really important discussion, and I know that for many, it's a mixed bag because we are certainly not, I don't believe that the Port of Corpus Christi, having just left there, I feel like I have intimate knowledge that we do not oppose offshore oil buoy systems. And that's something that's really important for fellow commissioners to understand, that we believe that offshore oil buoy systems exist and they can work. The idea is, is that when they work in an environment where there are controls, both both controls for environment, controls for regulation, and most importantly, I think that the key piece of this resolution has to deal with the VOCs, right? The volatile organic compounds, and this idea of vapor recovery units really not being in existence out there in the federal waters. Just kind of go over maybe some of the briefing of that, and then I think that I would be amenable to separating the Harbor Island. I don't think that that influences the Port of Corpus Christi, but I would like to hear your comment if we were to remove the, that language is really in there just to say, look, we're not against industry, we just believe that an industry within the confines of regulation makes more sense. It's about location.
First of all, thank you very much for the chance to address you.
Yes.
And that's exactly right, I think that's a really critical point of distinction. The port is not inherently categorically opposed to an offshore mooring buoy to facilitate crude export. It's really a function of this specific project by this specific operator in this specific location. So, I can draw a few comparisons to what a hypothetical buoy project run through the port framework, which is really the public infrastructure established to help create some checks and balances in maritime industry. So, port is a subdivision of the state, we are a governmental entity, we are by mandate responsible for the public trust. This project entirely circumvents the port infrastructure, that regulatory infrastructure. So, every aspect of this project's planning, the permit application, its design, all of that has been done in a vacuum in private industry without involvement from the port, and because it's located outside of state waters, it's not subject to the same controls that a, you know, for example, and this is why the Harbor Island piece, I think, was in the resolution as a counterpoint, Harbor Island as a proposal, the terminal Harbor Island would be subject to the full controls of TCQ, which means that all emissions need to be either captured or combusted. And the intensity of the disaster mitigation planning and security that would, that the port brings to bear in a safe harbor environment as opposed to on the open seas is really, can't even be compared when you look at the two projects. So, I think that Harbor Island was included as a point of reference, I think, from the port's perspective. We very much appreciate the Commissioners Court considering, standing in solidarity with other communities in the region against the Trifigura project, and if that means decoupling it from Harbor Island as a counterpoint, we certainly understand that and appreciate that sentiment. From the port's perspective, this project's location is really at the heart of, I think, the, what makes it a liability for the community. The project would be 13 miles offshore of the national seashore. So, you know, the national seashore, National Treasure is directly in harm's way if there ever is a spill or any sort of environmental issue at this location. Likewise, running the pipeline to this facility, which is essentially a floating donut, you know, it's a place where crude is delivered by pipe, large vessels hook up more to the buoy and crude transfer occurs, and that's where the emissions take place. But the process of getting that pipe from landside facilities to the buoy involves trenching through acres of seagrass in Laguna Madre. So, the environmental impact of just constructing the facility is substantial. Excuse me, so, and the, with respect to the air quality piece, we discussed the fact that without state oversight, there are no requirements for emissions controls. Because of the location of this project, southeast of the Corpus Christi airshed, and because of prevailing winds in our region, the, all of those emissions are directed inland towards our airshed, potentially threatening our attainment status with federal air quality constraint. So, again, from the port's perspective, it's not a categorical rejection of the idea of a buoy project. We just think that that location is critical and working through the regulatory framework that includes Port of Corpus Christi. This is the public infrastructure that we've established in this country to help regulate maritime industry, to provide checks and balances with private industry. And we think that's what the port has been offering this community for 92 years, and we'd like to be able to continue to have that opportunity. So, that's what the resolution's about. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any further?
Judge, I do. I don't care if we put it in or out, but would it not strengthen y'all to have it in there to show that we are so concerned about our environment that there is another alternative?
Yes, ma'am, and in fact, with respect to our challenges to the Mayrad permit application, being able to demonstrate that there was a viable and economically viable alternative under design and in the planning process was a critical part of our challenge to the Mayrad permit. Whether that's an essential part of your demonstration of solidarity against Trifigura, I think that's secondary for us as the port, as an institution. It was critical when we challenged the permit application in Mayrad that we were able to demonstrate a viable alternative in process. And again, I think that's the genesis of that clause in the resolution, but I think first and foremost, the show of solidarity in the community, you know, against the Trifigura project, which circumvents our regulatory framework, I think, is paramount.
And the reason I bring that up is because there is an entirely different feeling of which I don't really want to go into, getting into the Harbor Island project. It is a project that we have nothing to do with, it is a project that we can have really little or no impact on. The City of Port Aransas has a different feeling about the Harbor Island project, and I really am simply trying to separate the two projects, and if they need to be discussed, that's one thing. But I don't think we need to be weighing in on the Harbor Island project because I don't think we need to be weighing in on any projects that we don't have anything to do with. That's been just a position I've taken on this court since I've been on this court because otherwise, we're going to bring in all kinds of different concepts and resolutions and things of that nature that don't have any pertinence to the county's business. And in my opinion, Harbor Island is a separate project, and I would really strongly recommend taking the whereas part out of this because I think they can make their case for Harbor Island if they need to on their own. But this, in fact, is endorsing Harbor Island, in my opinion, and I'm not ready to do that without a lengthy discussion and bringing in people from Port Aransas to let the court hear because the City of Port Aransas is, according to the same email, fixing to take up the Harbor Island project for discussion at their council meeting, and I don't have input from the City of Port Aransas. So, I'm just simply trying to separate these two projects because they are two completely separate projects with two completely different perceptions. And so, I'm just, I'm going to move to take that whereas clause out because I don't think it's relevant to this particular resolution. I think we're opening a Roald Pandora's box by including it in this resolution. So, if I don't support it, you don't support it, and if I, then I'm not voting on this resolution if that stays in, and I'm not saying that in any way other than just to, so that everyone understands. I've got a whole different group of emails coming from me, coming at me on Harbor Island, so I would just appreciate if we could take it out.
I think we can have Harbor Island, you know, as a discussion for another day. I do want to make a correction, and that is, we do have a great stakehold in Harbor Island. Harbor Island is owned a very small part, private property, but a very large part is owned by the Port of Corpus Christi. And therefore, I think we do, here in this county, have a great stakehold. But perhaps that discussion of title and interest is for another day. But I think that what's most important is that the crux of this particular resolution is to show that this, the county Commissioners Court is concentrating on the lion's share of this resolution, which deals with its opposition. And I would like to strengthen the comment about opposition due to the facts. I mean, this is a, it's always difficult for any port commissioner. Trifigura, for those of you that don't know, is a customer of the port. They are a good customer of the port. We always want to do business with our customers. In some cases, it doesn't make either sense from an environmental standpoint or, in this case, there's really a regulatory argument here that's at stake. So, I'm very mindful of the fact that we're making a decision based on, I think, very good reason and not because we dislike Trifigura or dislike any of the business that they're doing here, and that it's very important that we wish that there were a different regulation environment. I wish there was vapor recovery out in the Gulf, but that's not the case. And the threat to the national seashore is just simply too great at this time, and the threat to clean air attainment is probably the most important threat that's, you know, could really impact us in a way that goes way beyond our comprehension, so.
And Judge, and I accept your correct, and maybe, again, that's the reason we need to have an entirely separate discussion on Harbor Island because maybe I don't understand that there is a role that the county can play in that because I've been told by people at the port that there's really nothing that the county can do in regards to regulating or weighing in with an agency like we can on this Trifigura. So, that's all I'm trying to do is just separate the two, and I'm happy to have a lengthy discussion.
I don't have a problem doing that, given that our resolution is not being considered in the MaRAD, you know, permit application.
But it very well may influence the governor's decision with respect to how he regards the Trifigura project. And at the end of the day, that is the crux of the resolution, so.
Commissioner Mattis, did you have a comment?
Yes, Judge, I'd like to weigh in, try to. Had some, watched some good football games over the last few days, so my throat is really in bad shape, but I didn't want to let this issue go by with, you know, no issue we deal with when we deal with public policy and decisions is ever perfect or necessarily black or white. There's always kind of that mix of gray there in the middle, and so, you know, one of the concerns I have is anytime you have a discussion and you're talking about environmental impact, air attainment, and economic impact, businesses and jobs, on the same side of an issue, that's something you really should take notice, and that's one of the things that really draws me to supporting this resolution. The only counter to that is, you know, our connection with our community partners. You know, they're a part of the port, Trifigura. We talk about, you know, this is an opportunity for another county. Now, our no-iron just is here in Oasis, but I think we need to be more respectful of lines that impact those counties greatly. I wish San Pat did that with our tax burden that we have right now. So, this is kind of us, big brothers, kind of stepping on other toes. So, when you look at all that and you weigh it, I just, there is a lot to discuss. And I know we need to look further into this issue on how it really breaks down to the offshore terminals. But for me, I'm just, I would like to ask, what is the timeline here to get this resolution passed? I mean, I'd like to have a one big discussion and breaking it apart. I think we need, and I think we need to keep it all together. So, when are they breaking ground, or how does this go forward with us adding our resolution to the slew of others that are already out there?
The governor's office has an opportunity, by way of veto, to weigh in on this project this spring, and that timeframe is fast approaching. I think the other jurisdictions in the region who have furnished resolutions in support of the port in opposition to Trifigura project have all done so over the last couple of months. Certainly welcome the opportunity to come back and have more detailed conversation if that's the will of the court. But I think certainly we're here today because we feel that time's of the essence in sending a compelling and compelling sort of regional message of solidarity and unification regarding support for the regulatory infrastructure that's in place in New Acis County through the port authority.
And I have no problem also just saying, look, the port is a very important economic engine in general, like you said, for the region. And so, I have no problem in saying that we need to make sure that those interests are protected as long as if there's anyone else coming in that they play by the same rules. And so, that to me means the economic and environmental impact that it plays. So, with those two tied together, that will have me leaning in favor of this resolution. I do have my reservations for it. I would like to, you know, buy another two weeks next time we meet to then finalize discussion. But I know we've been talking about it a lot, I know that the judge is well, first on this, with her experience on the port, so I don't have any problem moving forward, but I do have my concerns that.
And, you know, with respect to positive economic impact, the port is indirectly or directly responsible for over 25% of the employment base in the Greater Corpus Christi area, and this project essentially circumvents and doesn't contribute to that in a direct way by circumventing the port, and it's an important point of reference.
Thank you.
Judge, I would just, again, if we need to, if we want to wade into a discussion about Harbor Island, then I'm happy to do that, I think that ought to be separated out. The letter we sent to the GLO dealt completely with Trifigura and did not include anything about Harbor Island. I'm just asking that we pull the Harbor Island, because you're just using this as an example. It's not, but in essence, we as a court are endorsing Harbor Island, and we've had no discussion, we've had, you know, the, I, no discussion as a court in regards to the project of Harbor Island. We've talked a lot about, relatively a lot about Trifigura, and again, I completely am in opposition to the Trifigura project, and I think it's a bad project for area, and I think it's going to affect Port Aransas. In fact, I think I just got a word that actually it would be 15 miles off the beach of our Claybrook property, I don't know if that was this project or not the national seashore, is that right? Is that off the Claybrook County land? Anyway, it's, this project, I think, I don't know if he's talking about this or he's talking about something else.
Whether it's directly offshore or the national seashore, 15 miles offshore, if there were any sort of incident and, God forbid, crude was directed, you know, was pushed by railing winds towards the shoreline, it would no doubt impact the national seashore.
Right, if, in other words, I guess what I'm saying is if we had a Commissioners Court resolution to support Harbor Island in front of us, the room would be much fuller of people from Port Aransas who would not be in support of that position, and I would like to at least give them the opportunity to be here if the court, which I don't believe we should, but if the judge does, that's her prerogative. I don't believe we ought to wade into that debate in this court. But if we should, and we need to, then we will, but I need to, would like to give more people the opportunity to know that this has become Harbor Island discussion when I thought it was really just going to be in opposition to Trifigura, so.
Yeah, you know, I think that's a fair assessment, Commissioner Chesney. I think the object here is to state our, state a resolution that opposes the Trifigura project. I do think time is of the essence. I think we've been a little late to the game, to be honest with you, because of the General Land Office's interest. They required, I think, a December 14 deadline for commentary. So, this is really in an effort to, I know, wait for this court to begin its new year, which I greatly appreciate, and I do think I can bring some special knowledge. I think listening to Commissioner Mattis, he brings up a very good point, and I do, I would like to vote on this particular resolution today. But I can see and hear that there is an interest in getting more in-depth, and I think that that's required because this is not just, this is, this has a tremendous impact not only to our county, but as you suggest, to our neighboring counties, and we don't want to send the wrong message. So, I think that I would entertain a motion to amend the resolution, if you would so make that, to eliminate the whereas as an alternative to Texas Gulf Terminals Project, et cetera, et cetera. And then we could entertain a new motion to approve the resolution with that amendment.
I would make the motion to take out the whereas clause related to the Harbor Island portion until we have opportunity to hear if we decide to have discussion on that as a court.
And do I have a second on that amendment?
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
I don't, I, Brent, I understand your concerns, but I don't see this as a support for the Harbor Island. I see it showing the court, this is an alternative, that we are so concerned about this going out that we have another alternative, because we're probably going to get one or the other. And we may get both, I don't know. But to me, it just needs to be very strong when it goes in there, and I think that's what y'all are asking for. I just don't see this as support for this, I don't. I see that we are saying, we're concerned about our environment, and this is our other alternative if we can get that to happen, I don't know. But I will go with what the majority wants to on this, but I just think we want something that's really going to be regulated that close to our waters, our ocean. So, that's my thought.
I appreciate your comments, more than you know, because I almost have to put back my bias. The one thing that I can say is that it's always important to be unified in a particular resolution when we're opposing, and I would hate to have a non-unified vote. But I can see that we're going to have to come back and revisit this because it is going to be important in the future that we understand what we're faced with. Sometimes growth comes whether we want to or not, and what we need to do is make sure we're under the right environment so that we can have the controls that we need. And that's what makes the Port of Corpus Christi so great, is that they are a political subdivision of the state of Texas, so.
And Carolyn, the point of it is, is there is a, and I don't, I'm not saying I agree with the point. I have not looked into Harbor Island because it has not been before me as this has. I have done a lot of insight and looking into this because it's in Port Aransas and because it affects my area. Aransas and because it affects my area. There's a great contingency of people, including some on the City Council of Port Aransas, that believes the language in here that says this project is a safer and more sustainable alternative is not true. Now, I'm not saying I believe that, because I don't know. So for me to support wording like that in a resolution, when I don't have a clue if it's more, if it's safer and far more sustainable, is the only reason I'm asking that it be taken out for now, until we determine that. Because we, I'd like, if we're going to do it, then I'd like to have a presentation and the opportunity to go forward and talk to people about Harbor Island. I haven't, because I've been under the impression that the county doesn't really need to weigh in on that. So I'll go, I'll go do my diligence now in Port. That's all I'm saying. I just don't know that I, I don't know that it isn't, I don't know that it is a safer and more sustainable alternative. I just wasn't, you know, thinking this was going to tie Harbor Island into the Trifugura, which I'm very well-versed on now and very concerned about. And I think we sent that letter in before the 14th that said we had concerns. So I think we got that letter in under the deadline that we needed to. And then this is just further resolution in opposition. So I don't, I don't think it waters down this resolution to have that whereas clause in there, or to not have that whereas clause in there. That's just my perspective.
And I understand your concerns, I do. And I'm fine with going, because I think we're correct. I think we need to have a unanimous vote on it.
So I would just reurge the motion to take that out for now. And if the court really wants to come back and discuss that later, I'm happy to do that. I just would like to have the opportunity to let Port Aransas in on that. So that's my motion to take the whereas clause out.
Second.
I think we've had lots of discussion, but I'll ask it for the purposes of Roberts' Rules. Is there any further discussion before we take a vote? Is there any public comment regarding, I know we have, just want to recognize for the audience, Governmental Affairs Director Nelda Olivo from the Port of Corpus Christi, and Public Relations Director and Communications Director Rosie Colleen. Thank you for being here. I know you're part of the messaging and you have a, I think you also can be a great resource to these commissioners. And I'm going to invite these commissioners to reach out to you. Not only is you, of course, you, Jeff, as well, but ladies, if you would provide any information, any background information that you can, particularly as it, you know, you've heard the concerns, I think you can address those in the best possible way. So thank you. Having heard a motion for an amendment and a second, and having heard all discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor of the resolution as amended signify by saying aye. And all those opposed, an aye, I should forgot myself, and opposed, same sign. And the resolution carries.
Okay, now, do we have to do it now to approve?
I'm sorry? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I had said approve as amended. Can we do it that way? Is that all right? Okay, sorry about that, Kara. Yeah, just, so that was approved as amended by Commissioner Chesney. And Jeff, thank you for the background information.
Welcome the chance to come visit with you about Harbor Island.
Thank you. Actually, we will call you back, if that's all right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tyner?
Next, Judge, we have a resolution in support of term limits for the New Oasis County Hospital District Board of Managers. Whereas the New Oasis County Commissioners Court wishes to encourage and provide for more public participation in the New Oasis County Hospital District Board of Managers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of New Oasis County, Texas hereby supports legislation limiting the terms of the New Oasis County Hospital District Board of Managers.
I have a question.
Yes.
Discussion, Judge. Why isn't this just part of our legislative agenda? Why do we need to make it as a resolution? Is that...
My understanding from Senator Hinojosa's office, it lets him take this thing and go off running and finish the legislation. But I will add that. I will add that.
Yes. Is there any, does anyone have any questions on this? Commissioner Gonzalez, I know this was your...
Is, and one other question, is it going to be staggered, or is that going to be worked out?
Second.
Let me just get a second, and then we'll wand into questions and discussion. Second from Commissioner Chesney. Okay, now, Commissioner Mattis.
So is the, is the senator, or will we, or will the judge work out the details as far as, will there be staggered terms? Will these, everyone start at the same point, and then the terms start, you know, we start counting the term now?
All that's under discussion right now. I know that the senator's office is working with the hospital district, ironing out all the details. Would you agree, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes. You know, we're hoping it'll be maybe three, four-year terms. This is just part of the discussion that we've talked about.
And just as sort of my own comments and philosophy, and of course, recently, having been on the campaign trail, you know, you hear a lot of commentary about what good governance really means and what public, where public policy needs to be focused on. And no matter whether it's a discussion of local or boards, or whether it's, you know, all the way to the United States Senate, people generally are in favor of term limits. It's part of good governance. It's part of making certain that the torch is passed, that people are constantly in the mentoring mode, and that people have the opportunity to serve without having them basically been, you know, one particular group or individual serving for too many years, not allowing for others to be able to fill in that, to filling in that position. So I don't think that this is really about anything but trying to keep consistency in our county. I know the Port of Corpus Christi has term limits. I know the RTA has term limits. And I think that this is probably something that allows not only for equity, and as the Spawn Hospital Board as well. Is there any other, are there any other questions regarding this? I know Johnny Hip is here from the hospital board. Is there any comment that you'd like to make? Johnny, welcome.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
I'm getting over the flu as well.
Oh, my goodness. What's wrong with this county?
We passed up a family Christmas because one of the members had a couple of strains of infectious flu. And our Christmas got boycotted, so I understand what you're saying. Commissioners, as y'all consider this, I just want to bring a couple of points. The one is the obvious, that the court already has exclusive and sole authority over hospital district board appointments. And there are ways that I think that the court can control who goes on and off the board, because you already have that authority. The statute's very clear. The other thing I was going to add is that many of the board members who have served many terms, continuous terms on the board, have done so at the request of members of the court.
Absolutely.
Okay. And so for them to continue serving and stuff would be to imply that by the fact that they, would imply that, just because they applied, that they automatically got reappointed. And the court, I don't think, is in that position where y'all just automatically appoint people. The, in the case of the hospital districts, serving a short number of terms is not really beneficial. So when y'all consider the number of terms, it's a complex arrangement. It's analogous to sort of the train going down the track. And this depends on when you want to jump on the train, because the terms of it are always changing. It involves healthcare reimbursement, involves federal laws, and involves many other things. So the last thing I was going to add, that if the court, and we've been working with the senator's office on trying to come up with some language that could work, and the, it would seem that if the court was going to have the state impose a statute that limits the number of terms that a board appointments can serve on the hospital district, that you're hamstringing your own ability, and you're hamstringing your only, your already, the authority you already have to control those things. So if you have a thing in there that says that we limit the number of terms to, you know, four-year, four, three-year terms, or whatever, then y'all are in effect giving up your ability to control who goes on or off the board, because y'all can already do that. So what our last suggestion in terms of revisions for the senator was, is that we, that the, they would consider the possibility of using language that gave the court, the local Commissioners Court, the option of setting a policy regarding term limits, short of embedding it in a statute that says term limits shall be X. And we think that that would give you all flexibility going forward in terms of the number of terms of members to serve. It'd also give the ability to help recruit new members and stuff to the board. So our position is that if you're going to do it, do it in a way where you don't sort of hamstring yourself going forward, because the statute says X. Let the legislature give the authority to go ahead and set those limits and stuff internally, or for y'all to adopt a policy that limits the number of those terms. And so those are our only suggestions. We're not opposed to term limits. We just probably want to do it in an educated sort of manner. And the last set of proposals we sent back to the senator's office were couched in terms of giving the Commissioners Court the option of setting its own policy.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Hip? Thank you for your insight. And I know that the senator's office will appreciate working with you. And let me just take this opportunity to say, since I see members here, how much we do appreciate their service. And you're absolutely right. They're not there because they're there on their own. They're there because this court found them not only willing and ready to serve, but capable of serving. And we appreciate their service immensely. And this in no way should reflect upon them at all. This is really just an opportunity to create some equity across the county boards and commissions. And I think that there is also just the idea that you take it out of our hands. You know, you talk about hamstringing the court. The nice thing is you take it out of the court's hands. In other words, statutorily, we no longer become vehicles of our own demise either. So I think that there is, the statute allows for even a higher level of checks and balances. Having said that, we're going to continue to work with Senator Hinojosa's office. So Commissioners, the purpose of this resolution is to support term limits, and then to allow the legislative process to begin. And I think all of us should weigh in on that process.
You know, Judge, and really, it's not, we're not picking anybody else, but I think eventually, every board that we do should have term limits. You know, because there's a lot of people out there now that really want to get involved, and they just can't get involved. But I think that in the future, 12 years is a long time. If you hadn't done nothing in 12 years, you might as well get off and let somebody else get on there. But that's the way I see it. But anyway, the, I think that we're looking at all of the boards being term limits at one time or another. You know, this is something we need to have a workshop on, and probably in the future, and see where we go with this.
I support him. I think he's right.
So we have had the motion and second already. And so it's time for any other further discussion. All right, let's go ahead and vote on this. All those in favor of this resolution to support term limits, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. And this resolution does carry. I was handed a note earlier. We have Judge Ina Klein here with us to address a very important agenda item. If everybody will turn to number 4B2, I would like to ask, in the interest of her valuable time and the court's time, that we move this item up. And so I'm going to turn to that. That, again, is number 4B2.
Good morning, Judge Canales.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for taking this matter out of turn.
Yes.
As you're all aware, our county, like many other counties, have been leading an epidemic of domestic violence now for some time. We started this year with yet another fatality on the first day of the year at the hands of a loved one. I have been working on this problem now for about four years. After researching all the possible things we could do to assist this problem, I have found that, as you all know, New Oasis County is having a difficult financial time. And we need to do something with the domestic violence caseload. And to improve the position of this court, we need some new positions and some money. So I started thinking outside of the box and found a venue from the federal government, which is a grant for three years. It's a no-match grant from the county. So all the money would be coming from the federal government. I've spent the last year working on it and reaching out to the other judges who have taken advantage of it. One judge was in Dallas. Everybody else is outside of Texas. What we have right now in New Oasis County is the only court that exists in Texas. That's a felony domestic violence court. So using the fact that it's the only court like this in Texas, I have, with the help of our Grants Department, prepared a request for a grant which is due tomorrow. And it's asking for a little over $1 million for a period of three years, which would enable us to have four additional positions, including certified investigators, officers, who would monitor the defendant's compliance with the conditions. Not only would it help the safety of the victim, it would also enable the judge to consider releasing some of the defendants from the jail, which would in turn save the county money from not housing more inmates, because they would be on GPS. And I'm also asking for money for additional GPS units from the federal government. So it seems like a win-win situation for everybody. We have Maria from the Grants Department. She has the breakdown of the numbers. The grant is due tomorrow. They get, they let us know at the end of the year, I think in October. If we get approved, they may approve all of the positions we're asking for. Or they may say, we're only going to give you half of it. Even if they give us 1/10 of it, it's the 1/10 we didn't have before. And it's for a period of three years. Are there any questions before I turn over to the numbers?
What is the source of the grant? Which department? Which federal department?
Department of Justice.
Oh, DOJ. Okay.
Where, I'm sorry, Judge.
Go ahead. No.
Where would this new program be housed? Under, under what umbrella is that?
So I am collaborating with different departments that we already have. So the investigator would be working for the DA's office. The specialized probation officer for the high-risk offenders would be working for the probation department. We're also collaborating with the Purple Door, formerly Women's Shelter. The only position that would actually need an office that hasn't existed so far is a full-time therapist slash victim advocate. And I'm hoping that we could somehow find a coroner for that victim's advocate to house.
This is all great. I mean, and I support that type of program. I just, my concern when you were talking is why are we not talking to the probation department? But I guess you already have.
I have been talking to the probation department.
But also, after three years, will you be able to reapply for this grant?
Absolutely.
And if it doesn't, you know, you know, they might be out of positions. I know that.
And that's always a risk with the grants. The judge, who has been doing a similar program, but for the misdemeanors, not for the felonies, out of Dallas, applied for two extensions and was granted the two extensions. So he was able to receive the grant for a period of nine years.
It's a good program.
That's great. That's great. What can we do to support you in this grant?
I think you could give this program a blessing, so that we can tomorrow apply for this grant with the blessing of the Commissioners Court.
Don't move. You got my blessing.
Second. Okay, Commissioner Vaughn has second. And any further questions or discussions? Maria, would you like to say anything? Are we good? We're ready to apply tomorrow? That's great. All right. All those in favor of supporting this federal grant, signify, yes, sir? Absolutely. Please.
I'm Chief Tubers with the Eletilie Nation. And we have the Indigenous Healing Remedy Centers. I was on the Restorative Justice Committee for Veterans for Education Reform. We found our veterans to be leading our nation domestic violence. And those remedies, as far as what we had found, we had attested in 2012, the Department of Veterans Affairs suicide reports showed the uses of psychotropics damaging, to where the Sutherland Springs shooter is now being identified being on psychotropics as to this crisis that the president's declared here. Not looking at what we're supposed to be looking at, at these veterans being number one in the United States. If we don't curtail it and grab a hold of what the judge has ruled for the kids. As far as this business and these contracts we're having all through the United States, the president declared a public health emergency. the President declared a public health emergency. I have a lot of compassion. I worked with the mothers whose children were taken and put on these psychotropic drugs in our juvenile foster care systems. Whatever this has been caused here, I appreciate the grant, and we're here with a housing program that we'd like to propose instead of putting these kids in cages or dealing not with this mental health crisis that's coming from what the judge said, making members not functional for our society. You don't need to Band-Aid it, you need to find a cure. And if we don't look at, look what we're doing with the cure as far as Native Americans creating stabilization centers with our first responders, because remember that domestic violence, family violence is coming from officers. Right now, we're having a psychologist that are overseeing the Bear County Sheriff's Department because these officers are having domestic violence issues. These were the same things that we said in 2012 for our veterans. When we were there, this was acknowledged. That report showed 22 veterans taking their own lives every day. Now we have kids, this is no opioid problem. This is far from an opioid problem, is what we had said in 2012, and what happens in churches. They call for a resolution, as the Vice President did, and even the Governor saying it's our duty to, to conquer this evil. And how you do business on this or keep these granite and not, not getting to the poison? We're indigenous people, and we've had to work with this as far as you incorporating this society into not acknowledging what we need to awaken as far as those remedies. The Governor has a hemp bill, and we create those communities and put these people to work, to start manufacturing. It's what we said about our first responders when I spoke at, um, they had given 22 million for police brutality. I thought, wait a minute, do you hear what you're saying? I said, I'm gonna break the code of silence today, and I'm gonna say that the most brutal member of our society is my brother veteran coming back to America, not accepting. He suffers from post-traumatic stress disorder, and he's becoming a police officer. You've militarized a society. And I had my brother veteran blown up in Dallas, Texas, when he went on a suicide mission and killed five police officers. I had an officer shot in front of the police station by a young man that wanted his baby to be brought to him. I have other officers as far as the Fort Lauderdale Airport. And you have those statistics, you have those reports. This is a national pandemic, is what the President said, is this mental health crisis. So planting that seed, and what the judge is asking for is that data, this is that data, that she says this can't be as to the equities of what our collaboration is trying to bring back in our community's safety. This is a national issue, and you can't enforce it by not looking at the matters of fact. These are veterans, and you can guarantee the numbers are more veterans that are causing this domestic violence. And if we need help, we're trying to create that resource to where we use holistic remedies, and we can build manufacturing communities. We're communicating with Mr. Nixon, with IBC Bank, to work at looking at what the colonials can become as far as our border solutions. That's why we're here in Corpus Christi to attest to the judge.
Thank you.
On this issue. But please, if you can look at our project, I can give you more information on it and our collaborations, data and research on this domestic violence issue, because it's not just women. You know, that's being sort of secretive.
Thank, thank you so much for your comments.
Good point.
Judge Klein, thank you again for, for coming and not, not just presenting the grant today, but for initiating the grant and for thinking outside the box and really for taking the leadership role in this critical area of domestic violence and let us know what else we can do beyond today. Um, for example, I'm wondering if we can, uh, Tynor, issue a letter to Congressman Cloud's office, uh, making him aware of our, our application to this grant? Senator Cornyn and Senator Cruz's office as well, um, you know, beginning the process from the first of the year. Every federal grant, uh, we need to create a communication system so that they know.
But you're also, um, a good question he brought up. Is it just not for women, it was for men and women, right?
It is not only for women, it's for the cases involving intimate violence between two partners.
I'll make sure I got that clear, so.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Um, I didn't want to leave without forgetting to thank some people. Um, Laura Jimenez has been wonderful from the County Attorney's Office, and our auditor has been amazing tolerating my request to add one plus one and two plus two because I'm really, really not good at math. Um, so I just wanted to thank both of you for working with me.
Thank you.
Um, there are two other grants that I'm not prepared to address in detail today, but we're applying for them. Those grants do require a minimal match from the county, but we can leave that for other time. Thank you all.
At this time, I'd like to call for, uh, support of this resolution.
I think we did.
Okay, can we go ahead and, and please vote on the, um, submission of this grant application to the Office on Violence Against Women?
We already voted.
We didn't vote.
We already voted.
Nope. We have voted already?
No.
No, 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 we haven't voted.
Motioned and seconded.
Just motion, second and discussion. Okay, so let's go ahead and vote. I'd like to call for the vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. And the motion carries. So now we'll go back in order.
Okay. Before we go any further, I just wanna kind of apologize for what I appear when I.
Get that out of my.
I know they walked in and they saw the, the change of the, change of the guards and change of the color. So, uh, just to let anybody know that, you know, it's not the maroon, but it's the orange.
So can I take that orange Longhorn thing down now, since you?
To keep your souvenir.
No, I don't want it. Thank you.
Back to me. So I just want to let everybody know what we said.
I'm keeping the water.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I know it looks like we're shuffling all around the agenda, but this is, brings a lot of pleasure and a lot of, um, this is a good feel here. I'm gonna go back to public comment, and, um, we have a very special presentation for you here this morning. And Tynor, if you will help. I've always appreciated from the audience, um, this part of the process of Commissioners Court, and that is the recognition of service of folks who have given so much of their lives to Nuones County. And today is no exception, only that I get to be the one now that says how grateful we are on behalf of Nuones County. And that is to Betty Ann Arismendi for grateful recognition, recognition of over 19 years of service. And I have a beautiful, um, certificate of appreciation, and it's actually dated December 28th, 2018, just a little, a few weeks before today. And, um, my only sadness is that I can't give up and give you the big hug that I would normally give you, but I do so for your own benefit. Um, but this is your recognition certificate, and it's just a, a very small token. But just know that every day that you worked, you made a difference here in Nuones County. And it, you and, and your work will never be forgotten. So we thank you so much. And I know you have your beautiful family here to share in this very special day. And, um, are they your parents?
Parents and my sister.
Your parents and your sister. We welcome you and thank you for sharing her for 19 years here.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, it just went away. Help me. Chris, what is this?
Oh, just.
Technologically challenged.
That's the prize, Tynor. Surprise me.
Okay, thank you. Let's try this again. Okay, y'all ready? What are you looking at me? One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Those are good pictures. Let me get one. Is that Ian? Would you like to say anything?
She's just not really.
I'm just, I'm just happy that, um, I have made that decision to retire, uh, after being with the Sheriff's Department for 19 years. And, um, I will, uh, miss everybody. And, um, but I'll, I'll still be around. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to work for every y'all.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you so much. So that we can conclude with public comment, um, we have one last request. So Joseph Ramidis is the last person to sign up, if you would take the podium.
Commissioners, Judge, again, just wanna, uh, congratulate you on this, uh, great day and a fresh start for 2019. I'm Joseph Ramidis, now I'm here in my capacity with the Nuones County Drainage District, and just wishing everybody a Happy New Year. At this time, I'd like to invite, uh, Commissioner Carlos Benya, the Chairman.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Chair.
It's a pleasure and a privilege to be here before y'all. And I just wanna wish the Commissioners and to, we know everybody, I know Francesne, Judge, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner, our Commissioner from Robstown, Commissioner Marius, and we've had the pleasure and have meetings with Commissioner Terrell Vaughn. And so I just want, uh, wish blessings. Uh, I know that with the kindness and the generous love of this county court, that we will move forward in partnership and working together for this county. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much. I look forward to that wish as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Happy New Year.
Okay, that, that concludes public comment as I have it here on my agenda. And now we're gonna go back to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Or does anyone need to remove certain items?
I would like to move A and H.
A and H as in hat, okay. Commissioner Marius, do you have any requested removals for more information or no? Commissioner Chesney?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I know Commissioner Gonzalez had to step out, but could I have a motion to approve all but A and H?
So moved.
On the consent agenda? And may I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed, same sign. So the consent agenda passes. Um, can we have some discussion regarding, um, letter A? Commissioner Vaughn?
Dale, we've gone over a couple of these, but, um, that on page three, the 386, 731 to Baron and Adler.
Yes, ma'am. Those were items that were put in our, our, our District Clerk Registry Funds for a trust fund, a dispute between, uh, two parties that are not related from the county, but require settlement to be put into the registry fund until the case is, is, is determined. Uh, this was between Gulfway Shopping Center and Baron Alder. Uh, the amount was 386,000, 731, and the case has been dismissed, and the, and the judge has authorized the dispersment of the, of the registry funds, 386,000.
Okay, we had quite a few high-dollar items. Another one's on page four, uh, for 627, 287.
There was also a, a, a registry fund amount. This was a, a settlement from a, a partnership dispute. Uh, the amount was 627,000, 287 dollars. Again, the funds were, were put into there from the, from the partnership, and then the, the case was solved, that's how the money was just dispersed.
Okay. Um, Judge, I wish that we could have some type of workshop on this, because to me, these are all numbers and names, and I think we need to be more in-depth. That's one good thing that the city did do. They educated us on the check register and what we're paying and what we're looking at. And it, we're just voting on things that are numbers that there's no way, some of these things, we don't even know what they are and what they entail.
And what we can also do is, is I can work with, uh, each of you, each of these Commissioners individually, with my staff, to see what we can include on the, on the registry to, to make the, more easily understandable.
And how many checking accounts does the county have?
For the, uh, actually for the expense clearing, we have one.
Okay.
But, uh, total accounts, but, but we move money between accounts for all of our, all of our, uh, accounts payable and, and clearing accounts there go into one account, so we can, uh, control fraud. And then we have one account for our payroll fund, and then we have one account for our main accounts, and several of our, our, our departments that are not able to be in our depository agreement are, the island, and some of the Robstown banks cannot be in Frost Bank, so we have several banks, uh, in total, we have about 35 banks, 35 accounts.
And those are the things I want to know, so I can understand what I'm voting on and what accounts, and, and this is just very confusing.
Well, really, but all the, all the checks that are on this list come out of one account.
Okay.
But I will make sure, we work with each of the Commissioners, and we, we, if we need a, a, a workshop, we can definitely come in, and we can modify this to make it more easily readable.
Well, some need to be more in-depth on what they are.
Yes.
Okay.
That's an excellent idea. Maybe even have a, maybe another column that has a code. So if the code is a one, one means, you know, these are escrowed, escrowed funds, or, you know, pending resolution, or something like that, where there's some sort of a key.
And I, because I read them all, all the time, and where I knew it real, real quickly, on the very bottom, you see DC Registry, that's District Clerk Registry Funds, which is how I knew immediately it was, it was trust funds.
Yeah, 'cause you deal with it.
Yes, I deal with it every day. And like I was talking to the judge one time, we brought in some stuff, she asked on a question, so I'm like, oh, this is from this. Like, oh, well, how you know that? Well, 'cause I, I look at this all the time, so. But yes, we'll definitely, you know, workshop, and I'd like to work, you know, if, if y'all have some stuff you'd like to add, come talk to me and my staff. We can definitely modify this report, not, not hard.
Okay, thank you.
And you also had one other one on, uh, page 27, I believe, of the, uh, December 21st report for 50,001, 12.
Yes.
That was a training, uh, device for Southwest Keys Program for our juvenile probation department. They do that every once, every two or three years, they, they bring in some, some people to train their, their, their staff, and that just happened to be this one year that they did it.
Okay, thank you.
And so can we, um, do you feel comfortable?
Yes.
With letter A?
So moved.
Okay, and second from Judge Gonzalez, and if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of consent agenda A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign, and the A is now passed. And let's move to letter H, the authorization of the buyboard contract regarding the RICO copier lease.
Okay, it's 29382.
Yes, ma'am.
Per month, and it's gonna cost you around 7,600 dollars for the year. My question is, are there hidden costs, like for copies, if you make so many copies? Because it could add up.
Well, this is part of our fleet. We've got about 101 copiers that.
Okay.
That all, each contribute to a pool of copies that we get.
Mm-huh.
And so by and large, uh, most of the copiers do not have any excess charges. There are a few departments that may run larger jobs, like the sheriff's office, when they have large numbers of forms that they run, uh, or particular programs, like when we do the hurricane conference, there's, that's a unique situation, it's outside the scope of this. But this is for the library, and what they're doing there is they've got three desktop copiers that they're replacing with this one unit. So they're gonna actually reduce their cost to the county.
Good.
By going with this more efficient model. And also, they had had a machine that broke down that was for part, part of the public's use, and, uh, so this is gonna enable them to put one, that machine back out for the public's use.
Okay, I'm just ever mindful of, of their budget, because some of these have the hidden ones where they come in and charge you 500 dollars a month extra, so, okay. Thank you.
No, it's, it's very important, 'cause I know that, do you do meter reads? Do they require meter reads?
Yes, those on a monthly basis.
So all the toner and all of that, that's part of our contract?
Yes, the toner's included, so we don't have additional costs for those.
That's great. 101, that's pretty impressive, huh?
What if you?
Okay, so we can always make a copy in this building. Thank you so much, Michael.
Print, fax, and scan. We're kinda hoping that that might.
We're kinda hoping that that might be reduced a little bit because in two years, we're gonna be required by GASB to account for every copier as a lease.
Oh my goodness.
Because GASB is gonna have the lease agreement and then we're gonna capitalize every copier.
Right.
So we need to find out how we can maybe better rewrite the agreement and not count it as a lease, but we'll have to figure all that legal stuff out because in two years, GASB is gonna require some serious stuff and we will not ever have any operating lease ever again. It's gonna be all capital, which means we have to record asset values, right? And we never own the equipment.
And the other thing to pay attention to is we did set this agreement up so that it stays in line with all the other copiers, has the same expiration date in 2020.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, keep us up to date on that Dale.
We will.
Okay, so may I have a, a motion to approve letter H on the consent agenda?
I'll move.
And a second please. And all those in favor of approving letter H? Signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Okay, we can now move on to the regular agenda, please. And Tyner, would you like to begin by leading the discussion here?
Yes, I was asked by Commissioner Gonzalez to put together this item. And basically, it's discussing and consider giving Kristis Spahn Health one or more appointments to the Nuaces County Hospital District Board of Managers, including the possibility of seeking legislation providing for such and related matters. And basically, I think we put this on the agenda to see what direction the court wanted to go.
And then it's my understanding that as of this morning, we received some new information from the county attorney. And Lourdes, I wanna thank you for briefing this material for us. And of course, we now understand that only legislation can allow this type of process to take place. And Commissioner Gonzalez, did you like to address?
Yes, you know, and I, and that's fine, I mean, I don't have no issue with legislation. You know, as long as we approve it, that, you know, it has to go through the process of legislation. You know, and when I was talking to Tyner last week, I, you know, at first I thought about doing a voting member on the board on the, but then if you do that, you have equal number of members, you know, so. And I said, well, maybe two, but then you still have one voting and one non-voting and still be, so my, my consensus of this is be a non-voting member, you know, that maybe legislation could consider if we approve it. And the reason for a non-voting member is somebody be at the board with Spahn and can be bringing information, go back with information and, you know, a lot of things are discussed, you know, that involve Spahn on that board, involves things to dealing with Spahn. So I think we just need to start building a relationship somehow with Spahn and, you know, work together and some of those things. So my thing is just open it up, you know, that, everything is public information anyway, once it's discussed in the minutes. So it shouldn't be an issue why Spahn cannot have at least a non-voting member on the board.
The only question I would have, Joe, and I'm fine with that, would be obviously executive sessions probably would deal with a lot of things related to Spahn. So I would assume there would have to be some limitations, you know, put because obviously, they can't go into executive session to talk about and listen to things that would pertain to them because that might be problematic. But I don't think that would be appropriate.
If they're a member, if they're a member, they're capable of going into executive session and listening to everything, so.
That would, that would be my only hangup. If it's something that they're talking about like negotiations with Spahn and the contract renewals and things of that nature, I don't see how you could have Spahn in executive session on things related to Spahn negotiations.
You, I mean, just like anything else, these are volunteers that would be appointed by Spahn. Just like we have a board appointments in the Spahn Hospital Board. But you're right, in terms of, it does become problematic if it has to do with a particular contract where we have an adversary, we're advocating our positions which are different.
I'm open to maybe working all that out, but that just would be my only thought would, would be how to deal with that because I don't know how to, I don't know how you could do that. Now, I know we were gonna keep, I think we were gonna keep the appointments, but I was thinking y'all were gonna appoint Spahn people. I thought that was what you wanted, was people that worked for Spahn. No? Or maybe I'm just not understanding this.
In looking at all the other different entities, for example, out of Dallas, out of Travis, everything, they're all on a volunteer basis. It just gives them the authority to appoint somebody.
So they do it to where they appoint like a non-employee type person? Okay, so I thought you wanted people from Spahn.
It doesn't make really any difference to me, but I mean, if we, we're given the authority to do what either are, I guess. But to me, I mean, whether Spahn staff or they're, you know, they're non-Spahn staff, it doesn't make any difference. They're not a voting member anyway, so I don't see where there would be an issue with their staff.
Because they, you can't, I mean, you couldn't put Spahn staff back to negotiate a Spahn contract.
But they, yeah, but they're not a voting member on it.
Yeah, but they're getting privy to information that's secret, that's attorney-client privilege. That's a big problem. So there may be a way to work this out, so I'm not trying to, I mean, I wanna get you, get you down the road, but I would just throw those thoughts in for down the road.
But again, all, in looking at all of them, it's volunteers that are appointed, not staff members. Or at least they could be, but I don't know if they're, they're actually are members that are from staff. But the way I look at it, it's just a volunteer. They just have the authority to appoint.
You know, and anybody else that we have here doesn't, I mean, I don't see them coming to us and hey, you know, they know they're in a meeting. They know that's a privacy thing, they know, I mean, I don't have, anybody called me and saying, we had a meeting yesterday, you know, I'm your appointee, you know, and this is what happened at the meeting. So I mean, I think, and I can see Commissioner Chesney's point, but I think that a non-voting member would be somebody represent Spahn. That was my issue.
But just for the record, Spahn representatives do appear at their board meetings and they do give presentations.
Well, at times they do and at times they don't, you know, so.
But that's their choice still, but, but they are there. They do provide that information or information.
I don't mind allowing this to move forward. I mean, do we ultimately support it? I think we can have discussion another day. My concern would be, you know, would there be a conflict? Also, the court, when they decided four, six years ago about closing down Spahn Memorial and creating this big super shoreline center, you know, we've already really kind of tied ourselves so much to Spahn that we may not ever get out of it. And that may not be a bad thing, but if we ever decided or needed to, I think adding Spahn members to the board would make it even more difficult. You know, and like I said, maybe we're already down that road to where we, there is no turn back because there are inefficiencies. And I guess it would be with any, any hospital you set up, but there's, there's some issues and concerns I have there. So, and a Spahn, a Spahn member, employee to the board, you know, one directed for them, then the port is gonna ask for someone from Sitco to be on the port commission and someone from Valero and all these others. I think that that's just kind of complicates things when you have someone who's employed. How can they remove that hat and just work on behalf of the interest of the entire county or the hospital district? So that would be my concern. But, you know, as far as moving forward and allowing this just to kind of be put on there and have more discussion, I mean, I don't have a problem with that now, but I do, I do have some concerns.
The thing about not commiserating really is having a non-voting member. That was, that was, that was a real thing, to have a non-voting member appointed by Spahn.
But I mean, is that a deal breaker? Is that something that really hurts their business or hurts our relationship with them? That's what would be my concern. If that's, if that's what's lacking, then obviously, then yes, we need to put someone there. But if it's not hurting our relationship or our connection with them, then I just wouldn't see the benefit if they're already being represented there at their meetings and we're giving them all the information they need up to a certain point beyond being able to have a vote on something that could impact their livelihood and the livelihood of the Spahn system. So that's just my concern.
I think the, the way it's written on our agenda is to discuss and consider. And after listening to everybody, I'm thinking that the best possible solution to go forward is to continue the discussion in that obviously, we might have some legal issues and ramifications to discuss and consider. And also, maybe the opportunity to visit with Senator Inojo's office as well to find out just what their thoughts are and what they might consider carrying. It's very clear to me that, that there is a will to have non-voting. I think that's good and that's what this discussion at least has evoked, this member would be a non-voting member and that maybe we're not looking at members, but member as in one, because I think that the way it's written, it says one or more. So maybe there is an opportunity here to go back to the drawing board. And in fairness, I was able to speak to Mr. Hip yesterday, I'm sorry, Friday afternoon, which is the last lucid thing I remember, to be honest with you, until this morning. I've been that sick. But having said that, I expressed to him the, sort of the background as to why we thought that this would be a good thing to entertain on the agenda today. And so I think Commissioners, what I'm looking for is an opportunity to consider the discussion. And later, you would have before you something much more final in terms of what that legislation might look like or what it is that we're actually proposing. I think we're premature right now, but I do think that I wouldn't like to have your, your signal to move forward. And that's really what the discuss and consider is. And of course, we still need to hear from, from Johnny. But before we get to that discussion, I'm trying to remember the way all these rules work is if I could get a motion to, and again, let me be very clear, because if you're marking it down, Kara, I wanna make sure we say it correctly. And that is that we are, this, this would be a discuss and consider, a motion to discuss and consider, including the legislation for such matters. That's, that's what we're voting on, not that we would do it, that it's a discussion.
I think, I think I'd move that we consider this and continue to research it, you know, and maybe touch the Senator's office also to just on clarification as far as the legislation. But, you know, come back at a next meeting and know whether we wanna support it or not or do a resolution to support it.
I think that's fair. And can I get a motion?
So I'll move. Yeah, I'm not. We move forward in, you know, considering this issue at a later date just to discuss it further. You know, to give us time to research it, you know, and discuss it. And then also go with the Senator's office to see the issues of legislation to, you know, and come back in the next meeting and do a resolution to support it or not support it.
So is it just basically to have further discussion?
Yes, to allow us to have the opportunity to visit with Senator Inojo's office and also the stakeholders, which would be the Nuaces County Hospital District Board. And including, of course, Johnny Hip, the executive director. And I think he's here to also help provide some insight and some, I just kinda wanna get the formalities here, Johnny. And so I do have a motion to discuss and consider, and I need a second.
It never hurts to discuss and consider, so I'll second it.
And all, all those in favor? Actually, I'm sorry, now we can have discussion for Mr. Hip, so sorry.
Commissioners, one serious thing that needs to be added to the research list is that over the years, the hospital district has changed the mechanisms of its agreements with Spahn. And that at each point, we have to make representations to the state and the federal government that we have a arms-length transaction with Spahn. And so one of the things that clearly needs to be added to the list of things looked at is that we have made representations and the state and the federal government have relied on those representations that our transactions between them are separate, distinct and at arms-length. To the degree that we have a Spahn board member or an employee or someone who represents them on our board, I believe would seriously jeopardize that. And so I think as we go forward in these discussions, there's a lot more at work and in play with regard to these agreements and how our funding mechanisms work and how we're able to apply our funds to benefit the community that rotate around many state and federal rules. And so while this may seem like a very easy exercise of putting someone on the board, the connotations and impact of it could be significant.
Oh no, I don't think any of it's easy and point well-taken. And I've actually reached out to an expert in the field to just advise me so that I can be more well-versed as to the nuances. And I think with this point, Lourdes, you can also look at the contract specifically and if you can point to the clause that's pertinent, that would also be helpful, it'll lessen the duty. But that's what I think this is about. I think, I think there is obviously an underlying tone here that should not be lost on any of us that represent the county or the hospital district board, that there is an encouragement that you're hearing from certain Commissioners and from this judge that it would be good going forward to have the best possible relationship with those that we are contractually working with, right? It behooves both entities to do so. Having said that, there are many ways to achieve that, those goals. And this was an opportunity to discuss and consider one of them. I'm also mindful that there's only two counties in the 254 counties that do it the way we do it, ourselves and Travis County. That's it. And so this is a very unique scenario, has always been that way. God willing, I'll be in Austin on Wednesday at the Urban Counties Conference to learn more about being a judge. And I'll also be able to work, at least have some working relationship with those folks at Travis County. And rest assured, I plan on bringing this item up and hopefully, they'll share with me some of the pitfalls and some of the, you know, opportunities and challenges they've had so that I can continue this dialogue. But I, I think that if you'll work with us and be a little patient, the idea here is to create a communication that we think that has not existed and not placing any fault or blame on anyone. Just how can we go forward with a new spirit of cooperation? And sometimes it is a new day. You can just, not that you can erase the past, but you can at least pledge to create a new spirit of communication. This is part of that process. But we're gonna investigate carefully and the arms-length that you bring up is, well, it's, it's of the utmost importance to me. We don't wanna do anything to jeopardize our IGTs.
Right. And we'd like to work with the court to safely get there and we appreciate that.
I totally understand, thank you. So we have had further discussion, all those in favor of the item as proposed, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. And the item carries. The next item on the agenda is the discuss and consider approval of the legislative agenda for the eighty-sixth session of the legislature which officially opens up tomorrow. Tyner, would you give us the nice briefing?
Yes, once again, I emailed this out Friday with two additions based on the judge's suggestions last week. I know this has been out there since August, so I'll like to go over it quickly.
What were the two additions to?
At the, at the very top, it was number seven, preserves and protects Nuaces County's ad valorem tax base. And number twelve, any legislation to oppose that creates political instability or unjust representation in local governing bodies.
Thank you.
Those two items. So once again, quickly, Nuaces County will support legislation that fosters local control, reduces costs, protects and enhances county revenue sources, increases economic development opportunities, enhances or provides more revenue for state-provided services in Nuaces County, increases revenue to Nuaces County. Once again, what we added based on Judge's statements that she made in public last week, preserves and protects Nuaces County's ad valorem tax base. I don't know if the judge wants to expand on that.
I will, I'm gonna let you finish though.
Okay. And then again, to the extent permitted by law, Nuaces County will oppose legislation that diminishes local decision and control, requires Nuaces County to perform some service or task without providing the resources necessary. Ten, prohibits or limits Nuaces County's ability to generate revenue through taxes or fees, again, against revenue caps. And I, and we hear it's coming. Requires Nuaces County to give more county allocated revenue to the state of Texas. And again, what was added based on conversations with the judge? Twelve. And again, what was added, based on conversations with the judge, 12, creates political instability or unjust representation in local governing bodies. And 13 was added at the request of the court, and the language I came up for the court to consider is explore and pursue legislative ways to improve drainage throughout Nuaces County. Again, number 14, repeal or otherwise make House Bill 1295 less burdensome. As you know, it's not only, you know, the 1295 forms that we get for the agenda are very, very time-consuming, and in my opinion, quite pointless. Again, support funding for transportation projects, I-69, US-59, Highway 77, 281, 84, Interstate 2, State Highway 44, and Marine Highway 69. 15, who go to 16, is the County Efficiency Act. As you may recall, Conference of Urban Counties and the Texas Association of Counties are already working on this. Again, Garnet Coleman's chairman of the County Affairs Committee, and as that moves along, and that gets a bill number, I'll come back with a bill number and ask the court's support with specific bill numbers for this, for the County Efficiency Act. Again, we try to do this every session, pass a constitutional amendment to protect local governments from unfunded mandates. Again, oppose legislative or budget decisions that shift cost to the county or to local governments. Again, we oppose state cuts to our behavioral health, juvenile, and CSCD, and of course, indigent defense. Again, specifically oppose diversion of county fees and taxes, including mixed beverage alcohol taxes, which the state tried to do two sessions ago, would have been an $800,000 hit to Nuaces County. 21, oppose any changes to jail standards. 22, pass legislation that makes the Juvenile Justice Alternatives Education Program optional for counties. As you know, the juvenile department operates this, and it's more burdensome for them than they say it's worse, that it's worth. Oppose any limitation of county authority to regulate fireworks or outdoor burning. Again, 24, we've asked this, but not ever really gotten anywhere, but to limit court reporter salary increases to the average amount provided for all county employees. 25, oppose changes that would weaken disaster declaration authority of county judges. And what goes along with that, any diminishment of local control, we would oppose, as stated at the beginning, because there is fear, as the mayor said last week, Judge, the fear of losing local control. 26, appoint legislative efforts to enhance disaster recovering programs, including support of the state recovery programs designed to provide state assistance of local jurisdictions in meeting their 25% cost match of federally declared disasters. 27, oppose unreasonable minimum storage conditions for county records. We always fear that there's going to be some state mandate on how we handle our records, so we just want to watch out for that. And then, as always, where possible and where interests are similar, the county would coordinate its legislative agenda with other political jurisdictions and key community stakeholders in the region, and provide assistance to those entities. I'll turn it over to you, Judge, if you'd like to comment.
I would. Thank you. Well, as we begin tomorrow with the legislative session, probably it's always said that this is going to be a very important legislative session, but it is. And I do believe a threat to local control will be very obvious on the, in this legislative session. And one of the things that is nice is that you should know that from the local level, the mayor has gathered, I think, all the stakeholders, including myself, as representative of the Nuaces County, of Nuaces County, and we've been in discussions about how our legislative agendas have common ground. And so we intend to be, I think, a regional force, which is very nice. And I noticed that, I think he had to leave, but Cleo Rodriguez was here earlier, and the Chamber of Commerce also has a legislative agenda, which includes many of our issues, and it's an agenda that we have also taken a lot of time to go over. So I think that there are obviously a lot of county entities that have their own legislative agenda, but to the extent that we can work together, we will. The addition for the commissioners that I had some influence on, number seven and number 12, I'd like to address them with you so that you know, because as Tyner said, you all have had the rest of them since about August. I don't believe there's any substantive changes other than seven or 12. Is that correct?
And just the simple addition of drainage.
Drainage, of course, which I think had full discussion in December's meeting. Let me take them backwards. Number 12, the creating political instability or unjust representation in local governing bodies. I believe in not mincing words and just explaining with specificity what I was referring to. There has been a posting by San Patricio County for the addition of two additional port commissioners, and I have great concern that that would create political instability in the very strong governing body that is the Port of Corpus Christi. As all of you know, three members are appointed by this court, Commissioners Court, three by the city of Corpus Christi, and one by the county of San Patricio. I believe that representation has always been based on population, and when I have had the ability to study the data with regards to population, I believe the San Patricio is adequately represented. I believe that there is no port authority in Texas that has more than seven commissioners. In fact, not even Houston, one of the largest ports in our nation, has more than seven commissioners. Creating political instability is not only a threat to our economic engine that we have here at the Port of Corpus Christi, but in fact, it's a danger to attracting new industry in our region. When people and corporations see that we are governing bodies fighting amongst ourselves for control, authority, and power, they tend to not want to do business with us. And so I think it's very, very important that we have very good and strong discussions. I personally have a lot of, I just like him very much, Judge Krebs from San Patricio County, and I've recently gotten to meet the mayor of Portland, and they disagree with me, and that's okay. It's all right to disagree. It's just really important that we have honest dialogue and discussion. And I just believe, though, that I told them the truth, which is that I wish that Corpus Christi had more representation as well in Congress, which we had our own congressman, but it's all based on population, representation by population. But even if you looked at other areas, like revenue or land acreage, you would find that the appropriation of one Commissioner San Pat is still an appropriate number. And so someone said to me the other day, name the most important threat to the Port of Corpus Christi's economic growth. And before I could answer, a very wise counsel attorney who has represented the Port for decades, and in fact, his firm for over 90 years, said it's political instability. That is the greatest threat to any body that governs. And I believe that that's true, and therefore I added number 12, because I think it will help us as we continue our dialogue and discussion. And that's where we are right now. It's just dialogue and discussion. Although there has been a posting, I have not seen any legislation, any proposed legislation, and I've been told that there's none. So I take that on good faith, but I think that it was important for us to add that so that we could see what it is that's important to us here in Nuaces County. And that really goes for every institution. Political stability is probably one of the most important things you can provide to a county. And I'll ask for your discussion afterwards, but let me finish with number seven. And that's preserving and protecting Nuaces County's ad valorem tax base. It's no secret that we've lost quite a bit of our tax base, having lost the Supreme Court decision with regards to our boundary dispute, again, with our friends in San Pat County. And that's unfortunate, but there are still items that need to be discussed. So while that particular legislation that allowed for the direct filing of a lawsuit straight to the Supreme Court, even though I think that's unconstitutional, the Supreme Court disagrees with me, and they ruled, they did not rule dispositively on all issues, as they could not. They could not rule on boundaries. And so therefore, we have a pending lawsuit in Refugio County, and I wanted to make sure that we were all mindful of that. I didn't want everyone to just throw in the towel that, oh, we lost the Supreme Court case. No, we have a very, very critical and important lawsuit that's pending in Refugio County, and I want us to do everything we can as a county to support that process and our attorneys. And that's why number seven was important to me. And why do we say ad valorem? Well, because when we're dealing with submerged lands and some of the other items that we're not disposed of by the Supreme Court case, you're dealing with potential ad valorem value. So I hope that helps you understand a little bit of my rationale for adding those two. And I would welcome any of your comments. As you can see, it's a robust legislative agenda. It's one that I will take personal interest, as I hope all of you will. We all should just take turns and go up there every month. I was hoping you and, we could always, we could work a calendar together. A great legislative team is just that, it's a team. And each of us brings something to the table that can help address this legislative agenda. And if we work together, I know that we could be successful in being great advocates, not only with our legislative delegation, but beyond. So with that, I'd like to have a motion to support this legislative agenda.
So move.
And a second. And encourage any thoughts from the commissioners at this time.
Judge, I was at a session, it was for Senate Bill 2 in the last latest legislative session, 85th, and I was there to speak in the Senate Finance Committee meeting, hearing me, of course, Senator Inahosa's vice chair, and it went well into the next morning, I mean, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning. And even though out of that vote, it didn't, was favorable to counties or municipalities or school districts, the fact that was, was it was a great exercise in that those groups that found common ground came together. And so I totally agree and support what you're saying in that we need to have all of us come together, and especially locally. I think we've done that from time to time, but I think we could do a lot better job in that, and so I'm glad to hear there's been meetings and discussions about that with our leaders representing the different groups. Because when something comes up, and people complain or talk about the hidden taxes that they're having to pay, hit on taxes, let me clarify and enunciate because of my voice, the being, the ding they're taking on taxes is because there is not a proper, better way to finance school funding. And we know that that's one of the biggest issues facing ad valorem tax in the entire state. So when we look at, you know, when we're justifying or explaining why we're, what we have to do in our budgets, we always have to point back and say, look, there has not been a solution found that is more equitable in the state. If you look at the school boards, what they're having to face, then that has a big impact on us. So very refreshing to hear that we will take a more direct approach in supporting resolutions that will share our common goals with cities and districts, special districts. So I just hope that we will do that. I know that Tyner has worked on other issues for us in the past. Last session, we came up with an idea that we thought was just going to be a local bill, and ended up becoming a statewide bill, dealing, just so, because I wanted to have some interns, and legally, we couldn't. Everyone else in the state found out, hey, that it was against the law, they shouldn't be having interns, but now it's part of the law of the entire state, not just for here from Nuaces County. So there's a lot of things that we have done well over the last few years that we have made a difference. And one of those, I know that Tyner's going to be working on with us again, is the one I brought up, on the quirky law that we have, that we had a canine that retired from the sheriff's office last year, and by some quirky state law, we had to be the go-between, or we actually had to get a go-between, between us and the handler to adopt his retired dog. We had to go through a nonprofit organization for them to then be able to give that dog to the handler, which, in the grand scheme of things, I mean, government will still work every day, but it's this silly law that should be corrected, so we can just grant the owner to receive his dog after that dog retires. So I know Tyner's going to be working on that for us as well. And once again, it's one of those things that we're looking for a local solution, but we may have a statewide solution for everyone else. But I support what we were saying. I think, obviously, there's going to be more detail. I mean, this is very, very much a skeleton to give us how we're going to design everything, but I know that there'll be some more pushes, like Commissioner Gonzalez and others have and ideas to make Nuaces County work better. And so I just, I feel confident in what we have here today, and I agree, we do need to go be a part of team in Austin. I will be there tomorrow in the opening session, and next month, there's another item sponsored by TAC that I'll be at. When is, Dr. Miedus, when is Coastal Bend Day? Do you know that yet? Coastal Bend Day for Austin?
I think it's February 27th.
27.
The 29th, yeah.
That's good to know, so that we can get that on our calendars as well, because that's a big day to be out there, so.
Absolutely, and thanks for reminding me that this is a document in motion. This is something that we at least know today, this is what our agenda is. But make no mistake, there's always legislation that comes up that we will be monitoring, and that if we feel that there is a threat to our county, or a particular piece of legislation that negatively impacts, we will be certain to bring it to everybody's attention so that we can add it to our agenda.
Yes. Anytime something gets a bill number and starts to move, and the county is for or against, I will bring a resolution specifically on that bill.
Right.
And either in support of it or in opposition to it. So this document gives me the ability to posture myself when stuff that you can't foresee comes up, but when a bill starts to move and it has numbers, I'll bring every one of them back to Commissioners Court.
Great. Thank you. Well, with a motion and a second, and plenty of discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and that's an aye for me, too. Those opposed, same sign. And our legislative agenda as written carries. Okay, we're moving right along here. Tyner, do you want to move on? We're going to move on to Grant, actually, no, this is the discuss and consider for the consultant.
Just to open this up, as y'all may know, or as you know, Trace Finley and Terry Arnold had been, you know, consultants with the county, I think, since like 2016. You know, some issues came up in the fall.
Farther back than that.
It's farther back than that? Yeah, I just looked up recent contracts.
Doesn't matter. I just thought they did the last session, the last legislative session.
Oh, yes, yes. You're correct. Anyway, you know, when the contract came up again, I think a couple of commissioners had concerns, and it just never went anywhere. And so when the judge got elected, the judge spoke about, you know, let's look at some other options. And so we put this item on the court's agenda for some direction. And if need be, Michael's here on seeking proposals, if y'all want to discuss it in that way, or if y'all want to go ahead and talk about it and give staff direction on how you want to approach this.
Yeah, I'll take the lead on this, since this was really kind of my wish here, is to get discussion. here, is to, is to get discussion from my fellow Commissioners. Not only, as I said, is this a robust legislative agenda, but there are some items that I think could really negatively impact our county if not taken as a full-time job in Austin. One of the things that I've had an opportunity to do is visit with our entire legislative delegation, and they've encouraged this county to not only have a local presence, but somebody who can be there in Austin to help monitor and shepherd some of our legislative agenda pieces. And so I think that what is best is that we go out for requests for proposals and, and find us a true blue legislative consultant team, if you will, to be able to, to help guide, you know, guide us through this, this particular session. I don't want to keep dwelling on, on something that we can't change, but, you know, making certain that nothing passes us by again is, is something that just, I just can't have under my watch. I mean, the last time that that happened, where there wasn't a checks and balances, you know, it's cost us how much off of our tax rolls?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit. And, and it's, and it's jeopardized, you know, future litigation as well. So this is something that's very important. I know that most likely my fellow Commissioners will want to know a little bit about the process, and I do, too, so I might ask Michael to come up and explain to us how this might work, and the time period that this might be appropriate to open up for consultants.
Okay, I think I'm going to defer to Laura a little bit on.
That's fine, just be here in case she has a question for you.
Obviously, the, in the, they're, they're, they're basically considered professionals, they're not lobbyists, but they're professionals, so you really don't have to go through the, through the process.
Oh.
You can, if you want to, we, we could go that route if you so choose.
Do we need to put this as a motion?
But, but at least.
Do we need to have a motion so we can discuss this, too? Sorry, my bad.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's fine.
I just would move that we discuss and consider seeking proposals.
Yeah.
Thanks, go ahead.
Thanks, go ahead.
So anyway, I guess the court will have to decide whether or not you want to do that or not. You, you can put out a notice, and then accept whoever applies, and then, and make a decision whether or not you want to go with one of them or not. Or you can go through the, the RFP, but it takes a little bit longer, you have to put it, advertise it twice in the newspaper, so.
Yeah, you're just going to add some, probably a lot of additional time to the process when it's not required to do so.
Yeah.
I think right now, we really, legislation is starting already, we need to have somebody on board, like, maybe tomorrow, but, that's kind of soon, but I, I think that we go the process, it's going to take a long time for the process.
But we can, for transparency purposes, put a notice in and receive everybody. I think that's probably what most people would want.
Right, how do we do it, to where we can not have to go through the lengthy process, but make sure anybody who wants to apply can apply?
Right.
That's what she's asking, I think.
You can just put a notice on your webpage.
And I can send it out to the media.
Time in the newspaper, you so choose, I don't know how long that takes to place it on the newspaper.
That's usually just a matter of days.
Okay.
And then, and then you'll have a list by the next Commissioners' meeting for consideration?
Yeah, I like that. I, I want to be as transparent as possible in this process, but I'm, I'm also feeling a lot like Commissioner Gonzalez, I wish we had them yesterday, so we could be talking about tomorrow, and who's going to be there to represent us as, on the inauguration day, and, I mean, we want to hit the, you know, the job as quickly as possible.
I guess that'll be you and Tyner for inauguration day, Judge, if you're able to be there.
No. I was supposed to be there tonight, I'm really, I'm, I'm, I can only imagine, you know, that the headline reads, you know, new judge infects all thirty-one senators.
Yeah, that would be, well, there's a couple, no, I'm just kidding, I'm sorry.
But I, I lean towards that in this discussion. So would you consider it then professional services and then a notice for such, Loura? How would this be phrased?
I'm not quite certain, they could be professional, but you can do it as a personal, which it means that that individual that gets elected is the one that is actually going to do the work, and you can do that without going through, it's satisfied, it's an exception to the purchasing.
Yeah, it's going to be under the personal services.
So, but we have to give them some parameters, financial.
Yes.
What we're looking for, something, right? I mean, because.
You could.
But we don't have to?
Or we could enter in negotiations afterwards.
Yes.
Yeah, basically, what I've read in the, in the law is that you identify the person that's competent to do the tasks that you have for them at a reasonable fee, and you negotiate that contract with them.
That's usually what I'm familiar with.
The actual notice will, you'll have to set out what you're really looking for, as far as the skill level, or, you know, what their so-called job will be.
Well, I know lobbyists, and they're going to think that they, their value is, you know, a lot, so we got to be careful, and we got to try to limit something, because I, I didn't agree with the twenty-five thousand a year or so that we did, even in off-years, but we got to find something in the middle, that's not going to break the bank or a budget, but at least entice those with a, with a strong skill set and connection here locally and up in Austin. So I think we need to put something out there, because, one, I don't want to waste anyone's time that's going to come and has a value of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, but I'll tell you right now that that's not a value I'm willing to put, as hard as they will, will work for Nueces County. So we need to be practical in what we offer, but we shouldn't create, you know, scrape the bottom of the barrel and put such a low number that we don't get, you know, strong candidates and firms to apply, because we do need those that are going to work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, like Commissioner Gonzalez does, but up there in Austin, and it's going to be advocating for the county.
That's a lot to ask.
Keeping guard for the county, so that we don't lose out on legislation that could hurt us. So if there's a way that we can set some sort of idea, this is what we're looking at, this is how much for this session, I, I don't want to waste their time or ours, because someone could come in and say, hey, this is what I can do for you, but in the end, we just may have sticker shock and say, why bother? Why, why go that much?
And John, one, one thing you need to know, that the reason we gear, the reason you gear the off-years is to spread out the cost. Because if you hire someone for session only, then they're going to want ten thousand dollars a month, let's say, or some ridiculous amount. So if you're able to say, we'll hire you for two years, and we'll spread that out over a period of time, then it becomes much more affordable to the counties. And so you're going to use, you don't have to, but usually, a lot of times, you will have an off-year lobbyist that won't do as much in the off-year, but will do way more in the on-year, and because you don't want the sticker shock of what they're going to charge you for that five-month period, you, you can bill it out. Now, that's not how every deal is done, and you can certainly do it, you know, just for session only, they'll, they'll price you session only, or whatever you want they'll price you for. But at the same time, you know, if you're, if you are able to spread it out, then you do have some additional help in the off-sessions, which is, is really nice to have, is nice to have someone up there, not twenty-four-seven, maybe, when they're in the off-session, but where, because things do come up in the interims and the interim committees, and sometimes you get, like, we, you know, Trace and those guys were very good with the General Land Office, and so they helped us with things during the interim, that kind of stuff, so, but, but yeah, I think you're right, we've got to figure out, kind of as a court, you know, what we can, what we feel comfortable paying, and I think if we think we're going to get someone for the amount that we had session only for what we were paying Trace and Terry, that ain't going to happen.
I agree, it's got to be spread out, and it's got to be people that have connections to the governor's office, to Lieutenant Governor's office, to the Speaker's office. Those are the people that we need here to apply. I'm just saying that now, because if you're going to come and work for us, it doesn't help us if you don't have access to those people. I mean, we're obviously split here in the court, but we are unified in our legislation that we're pushing, and so we need to have whoever that is, put in, put in their bid and, and come and, and work for us, so.
I don't know, it's a question for the county attorney, but can we say we're going to pay him during the legislative session one amount, and the off-year another amount?
You can.
You can do whatever you want.
Negotiable.
Yeah, you can do whatever you want to do. It's just, they're going to, what you want to tell them, in my opinion, in dealing with them in the past, is, here's what we, as a court, are looking for. We would like you to give us a proposal that either is session only, or that spreads it out, or both, or whatever, so that they'll give us, like, because we're trying to do this so quickly, so they'll give us quickly what we want, and we can make a, a fast decision. But, you know, me personally, I think, I don't, I don't, I think we need more, I have always come from the, and it may be what, not what the court majority is, I've always come from the vent of, we need to have more legislative presence than we have. I said this when I was at the city, I say this when I'm at the county, I think we need to have more. Tyner does a fine job, but Tyner's got a job here, he doesn't do it full-time, none of us can do it full-time, it's just not practical. So for us not to have someone, some, a team, and spend some more money, and that means spending some more money than maybe we spent to find what we need, and I am in support of that, figuring out where to get the money is yet to be determined, but I think it's important enough to where we need to certainly look at it. But that, you know, that's just my opinion.
I agree, and I'm trying to keep us on task here, so the, the way it's written is discuss and consider seeking proposals. Should we modify that to discuss and seeking, or, I'm sorry, discuss and posting notice for? Do we like that verbiage? Discuss and, 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 yeah, that way we can be, yeah, forward acting. And then with regards to Commissioner Modis's concern, Commissioner, would it be all right if I worked with the county attorney on the, on the language with regards to dollar amount? I, I think at this point, perhaps, the best thing to do is get the notice out, and I, I hear that there's a financial concern, and I also want to remind everybody that while Tyner is acting as court administrator interim, that the governmental affairs position is an open position, and therefore, we're saving money, Tyner, we're saving money. And so there, something that I think we ought to work also with the auditor's office as well, you know, to try to get you a better picture by the next time we meet, as to the dollars that are available to this court, so that they might match up dollars that we feel comfortable spending, and also dollars that are available, because it's going to have to match. It can't, it can't be, you know, what our wish list is. And I'm going to go one further, we're not there yet, but boy, do we need to be. And that is, we have federal issues as well. We have serious federal ADA issues, we have serious, as I understand it from being briefed, U.S. Fish and Wildlife issues. These issues also need to be addressed at the federal level, and we might, in the future, consider what our best course of action are. You might say that's an expensive business, getting a federal lobbyist, but we may have somebody that we seek just, you know, on a as-needed basis, and maybe we need them only one month or two months, but I guarantee you, when you have a million dollars on the line or more in penalties and interest, they're very well worth it. So I think that, that's something that we also need to be mindful of, that our legislative agenda is so that we can protect our assets here in this county, and protect the local control that we believe counties should have.
Okay, so I, if I hear you right, Judge, we'll work on the notice, we will post it, or do you want to come back to?
I would like for this, well, I would like for us as a court right now to vote as to whether we agree to post. That's not really how it's written, but I'd like to receive possible amendment for you to, for this court to approve that. Do I have a motion for some?
How long will we have to post it? Because I think this should have already been done, I mean, we need to expedite it. So how long would the posting be, and how much time do we have?
Not under any regulations.
We can decide how long it is.
So, I mean, we need to move it quickly, when's our next meeting?
On the twenty-third.
Okay, so if we had to, Judge, we could call a special meeting if we had to, just to do this one item, correct?
Yes, we could.
Because I, I just think we're late to the gate.
We are, we, we would really like them to be there as, as they're doing all of these preliminary actions, you know, coming in to office. Remember, committee assignments will be given very quickly.
And as for me, I'm not for putting any amount on it right now, I'm for posting it, and then get them in here, you may lose some if you put an amount on there that's too low, you may be able to get them in here and negotiate a price, you never know.
That's, that's, and then how, how are we, how, and then, I, I'm all for this, what everybody just said, but how do we, what's the process then for letting, get the word out to the people who we think might want to apply or could apply and?
Tyner, what, what is your answer to that?
You know, I, I think in email blast, I have all the TV stations, all the governmental affairs people, all the radio stations.
That doesn't help us, they're all in Austin.
Well, can we reach out to any of them that, have we, have any names that we could reach out to?
That's what I'm trying to get to, is how do we, how do we get to the people in Austin that would be applying for this position? That's what I'm asking for. I think that needs to be part of this discussion and part of the.
New Austin newspaper.
They won't have time to read the paper.
The county clerk recommends a quorum report. I don't know what that would cost, but I can certainly investigate that, and if it's the court's wish to have a, have a proposal deadline, maybe a couple of days before next court, and that way, we can ask the people to come in for the twenty-third, or do you want to have a special meeting?
The other thing is, you know, I know I heard you, Commissioner Modis, you'll be in Austin this week. Carolyn, will you be in Austin this week? I'll be in Austin, you'll be in Austin? Commissioner Chesney?
I'll hold down the fort.
Hold down the fort. All I can say is, the old-fashioned word-of-mouth might work just fine, too, we all need to do our due diligence in, in being, every lobbyist that exists in the state of Texas will be in Austin this week.
And Tyner, you've got to have a list of lobbyists that.
But they have communications.
Yeah, you can.
We've got a list of some sort with email addresses.
So there's a lobby, there's usually a lobby book that has the lobbyists listed in it, there's lobby filings, so I would say that the court directs, directs Tyner to go and find a list of lobbyists and put a BCC, so they don't know who it's all going to, and then blast it all out to all these lobbyists, and, and if we can't get some responses, then shame on them.
And I'll send it out at least to our local delegation.
Yeah, absolutely, and send it to the local delegates.
Means I don't want to work.
There you go. So, I'd say we do all, my motion would be that we do all of what we just said.
Kara hates that.
I don't know, I don't, I'll, so we would, we would post the way that Laura said, we would leave it open without prices, and we would direct Tyner to email every lobbyist he can find between, you know, now and whenever. Now, the only thing I don't know is, do we want to have a special, I'll make that motion first, and then we can talk about special meetings, I guess, and see how we want to do that.
I have a motion, a second, and we've had good discussion, if anyone has anything else to add at this time. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign, and I'm aye on that as well.
Now, do you want to have a special meeting? Do we want to, I don't know what y'all want to do to speed this up, I'm all for speeding it up.
If someone asks, I'm looking at a calendar, boy, this is great.
Oh, but y'all are going to be out of town.
Someone really is reading my mind, I am now looking at a calendar, and our next meeting is the twenty-third.
But y'all are going this week? I don't know when it is, it's all this week? And the purpose of the special meeting would be what, Carolyn?
Well, we may not have to have it, I'm just saying we need to expedite it. I don't know how quick we're going to get any applications in.
Yeah, look, twenty-third will be.
Maybe we need to leave it at the judge's discretion, if she sees we're getting a bunch in, and we can do it.
And we may want to have a, you know.
You have to have like a deadline of some sort?
Yes, we do. Is one week too, too, too fast?
As long as we get after it, well, we could say the sixteenth, because that'd give us a week and a couple of days.
Yeah, that's enough time.
Loura, one week.
One week from today, or one week from regular meeting?
One week from regular.
Make it harder, Brent.
I'm trying.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth deadline? For, okay.
Yeah, she's not going to get it out till tomorrow, most likely, and that's working fast.
And Judge, I think you're out of town on the sixteenth, the LBJ School.
I got you on the deadline only.
That's just the deadline.
Okay, gotcha, yeah.
They're sending me to Judge's School.
Have fun.
I'll be out, too.
Just deadline.
Okay, so we're good there. Maria, you have been most patient.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, we're moving forward to grants now, and.
Judge, can I ask, I'm sorry. Did y'all vote on that?
Should we go back?
I think we voted, didn't we?
We did.
Okay, I just had a, I'm sorry, before she gets her, and I totally missed this, I apologize. Can I, can I just go back just for a minute to talk about three-Q, which is that, the appointment process to the Porta Corpus Christi authority of Nueces County?
Yes, of course.
If that's okay, I apologize. The only thing I had a question on was, one of the things I think's been very effective is, especially for, not for every one of these appointments, but for some of these very important, high-level ones, would it be okay to, to set this one up to where we did, where we did the same way, where we had the, the court pick their final whatever, and then we did a, an in-person interview, where we interviewed our final four, something like that? Would that be, it's how we, it's how we did the sheriff and some of the other ones, it was actually Commissioner Modis's idea, because it's very transparent and very helpful, is that something?
The city did, that's where he got the idea from.
Yeah, that's right. Hey, you know, steal it from whoever, that's fine. So I just didn't know if we needed to.
Rubbing off, huh?
To do that.
A little credit here, right?
I think we have. I think we have a, a, Tyner, can you remind me, uh?
These, just to point this out, this, these are appointments for a board, and we've never done an in-person.
I'm just throwing it out there, and if people don't think that's appropriate, I just, for the board is probably the most important one we, you know, point.
I like your idea.
I'm not saying all of them. I don't wanna start down the path of all of them, and I know it gets hard to pick. And if we don't wanna pick them all, then, then I'm okay with backing off on that, but this one is one that everybody has acknowledged is really important to do. But if it's gonna start down a slope of having to do every board member, then I don't wanna do it. So I'm just throwing it out there for discussion.
I like the idea because I think it's such an important position.
Okay, then let me, let me pull back and let me just, let's all think about it, and we can come back around to it if we need to. But that one was pretty, I think that one's pretty important, and maybe, maybe we could just, let's think, yeah. I mean, no, could you, could you say like, we, we're gonna do these going forward? Like, I think, I'm not saying all of our boards are not important, but we, we don't have the time to interview every single board member, so maybe, so I'm gonna pull back and think about it. I, I would.
Why don't we think about it, but I underst, I, I hear you, and I think there's probably should be some encouragement as to, uh, having, having candidates come and visit with each commissioner.
Okay, I withdraw my request. Thank you, Judge. For now.
Okay, Maria.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
The item on the agenda this morning is discuss and consider the execution of forms related to funding for the airport fuel facility improvements from the Texas Department of Transportation. Um, so the Texas Department has identified funding through their capital improvements program for, um, a fuel facility out at our county airport. And, um, of course, our airport manager, John Cox, is here if you have specific questions on the project. Um, the forms that will need to, the court will need to execute is the, um, first of all, is the certification of project funds. So the project itself is estimated at eight, okay, let me break this down a little easier. So the project for the construction is $600,000. The county will match those $600,000 by 25%, which is $150,000. They also had budgeted for contingency in the amount of $220,000. And per, um, Judge, former Judge Lloyd Neal, um, he did offer to, um, cover any of those contingencies above the $600,000 at 100%. So the total estimated project cost is to $820,000. So the county would be committing definitely $150,000, but up to $370,000.
Let me just correct that, I think, just so we make, run the right boat here. He said he would cover it, but it comes out of his budget.
It would come out of, yes, he did, uh, allocate funds from his 2015 CO monies. Um, so there is funding available there.
His budget, the county attorney's.
It's, well, it's the county judge's budget.
I'm sorry, county judge.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I remember that when you spoke, and you said that it would be come out of the, right, Dale, Dale, I'm sorry.
Like you said, come out of the COs funds that were, that are assigned to the Judge Neal at the time, and then now Judge Gonzalez has.
Not the general fund, but.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not general fund money, no.
And I have been, um, I have been briefed on that.
And again, to clarify, the $150,000 is the main match. Anything, if the project were to cost above the $600,000 total, then the county will match that at 100%. So again, $150,000, but anywhere up to $370,000.
So how much money is in that 2015 certificates of all applications?
Right now, we have available to be allocated 1.5 million.
1.5.
So that's one of the forms that would need to be signed, um, by Judge Gonzalez. Um, another form is the certification of airport property interest, which our county attorney's office has extensively gone through, um, this, uh, particular form. They have verified that where the fuel facility will be placed is on county property. Um, so basically, this form is just saying, yes, we own the property, and we give, uh, Texas Department permission to, um, do construction on that.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Okay, there is one more form, and I just had a question on it. There is a designation of sponsors authorized representative. So the, you as the county judge can authorize, um, somebody, whether it be our county engineer, it can be yourself, but it can also be our county engineer or our airport manager, um, to kind of, because there's gonna be, Texas Department manages the project, but there will be, you know, plans and specifications, and, um, Texas Department will handle the, you know, bidding out of the project, but there will be some forms and things that will need to be signed by the county. Um, so you can designate whoever you want to be that point of contact.
Since I have a motion and a second, may I ask for discussion? And Juan, would you mind coming up and letting me know that you would be willing to serve in that capacity as head of public works and? Yes, good morning.
Uh, yes, Judge, I would be willing to sign off on the, on the documents.
That's great.
As needed by the, by Texas.
And, and I think that, just I come from sort of a background and world of project management being essential. And so I think that this would be a great opportunity to, to test our skillset here, because, and I invite you, John, come on up. I know this is an important project for you, and I just would like for you to remind everybody why it's an important project. Why is having a fuel station so important that we're willing to, to make this, uh, investment?
Certainly, we don't, we don't supply jet fuel. Uh, I do have some turboprop aircraft that come in that, that require jet fuel. I can't service them. With jet fuel will help us increase traffic at the airport, which is what we need.
Right.
Big airplanes, of course, need a longer runway, but that's down the road.
Right.
And more fuel cells.
And is there a way in your mind, or would you be willing to work on this? The contingency fee is what really is driving the cost here for the county. I mean, the, the 75-25 match looks fine, you know, but it's when you start getting into that 220 contingency fee that really starts to make me a little uncomfortable. Any thoughts, any ideas there on where they came up with that contingency number? That's a very odd contingency. It's a third of the overall budget. Usually contingencies are not a third of the budget.
I can't wrap my mind around.
Yeah.
The price of the fuel system as it is.
Yeah.
So, of course, the state people say, well, if we're involved, it's gonna even cost more money anyway.
Right.
That's just something I.
Okay. Well, you know, maybe we can start a, we have so many projects with Texas Department, not just airport-related, but others. Maybe we can use this new administration as a good way to start a relationship and start getting those answers. But that's why I'd like Juan to be involved. The contingencies really need to be limited. It just, that's a very strange, uh, do you, is any, is there any thoughts on that? I just don't usually, you typically a 10% contingency is appropriate, um, but not a 33%. So Juan, that would be your first order of business is to get a handle on the bids and find out how we can limit that. And, and I do wanna emphasize that that money was pledged prior to me, prior to my arrival. But I have gone over, uh, with Dale and the auditor's office, and I, I can ascertain that the money is available. So now the goal is, is since it's been pledged and promised, let's make it fruitful and profitable. Um, and make certain that we do everything we can to try to, you know, encourage more traffic and business through there.
Um, I'm concerned about the contingency fee as well, because usually when you do that, you have a reasoning for why it's that much. Has anybody not dealt with them? No one knows why?
Honestly, I, I don't know how the project, like, we didn't submit an application for it. I, so Texas Department, I think, came up with a number. So, yeah, that's why it's.
No reasoning on how they got their numbers.
Once again, a legislative consultant needed from the job. Yeah, this is a great way, by the way, our legislative consultants, I foresee not just interacting with our legislators, but also with our state agencies. This is really important. So this is something that we'll need to get a handle on, and, and I'm not sure, I mean, John needs to be involved with the day-to-day operations of the airport. I want him included so that there's always solid communication, but, um, I'm gonna kind of, you know, once we get some communication with Texas Department, Juan, we, we really do need to get a handle on those, the numbers.
Judge, we'll, we'll coordinate that. We'll, we'll make sure where the numbers coming from.
Yeah, find out.
We're a design-build project, so we, we'll be monitoring it.
It is a design-build, okay.
Pretty much.
Great. Okay, um, in that case, um, shall we, uh, vote on this particular resolution? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, same sign. And this grant, um, will be, um, executed, all those forms. A perfect timing, wasn't it? Now for Public Works and Juan Pimental.
Uh, Judge Commissioners, uh, the following is a, uh, Public Works is recommending approval of the dune permit protection amendment. It's for the resurfacing and reconstruction of the beach access, vote number two by the City of Corpus Christi. They, as part of the amendment, they included some water lines and some restrooms and showers. So at this time, uh, Public Works is recommending, uh, approval.
So moved.
What's the cost?
There's no cost.
No cost?
It's a permit. It, it's through the City of Corpus Christi.
You know me, I'm making sure.
Yes, ma'am.
You know what? That's a good point, though, and I'll try to emphasize this. We can start creating little protocols. Every time we come up, you know, talking about a project, it always would be great to just say what the cost is, you know, in the, in the summary. Or if there's no cost, there's no cost. It just helps. Um, I think I got a second, Commissioner Gonzalez. And so are there any other discussion here regarding this dune permit? Always thought that was interesting, that dune permits are under the county, you know, auspices, so. One more arena that most people don't know about, right? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, aye. All those opposed, same sign. And that particular item is approved. Thank you. And Dale, you're up.
Yes, uh, yes, Your Honor. The first item is, uh, discussing concern of the reclassification of the unfreeze of the chief executive of the county judge position. Uh, Tyner and I met with, with Judge Gonzalez on this position. Uh, this, we're, we're being, uh, recommended to reclassify this from a pay group 3404, which is $75,129, to a pay group 381, which is $84,822, or an increased annual cost of $9,692. Now, that is a little high, but there are some costs to offset this. For example, Judge Neal was at a higher value than Judge Gonzalez being paid for, so that offsets a little bit. We are having to pay the, uh, vacation and sick leave of the outgoing, uh, chief, but, but that was not really, uh, fiscal impact to this reclassification. So going to that, uh, this is an increase, but we are also changing the job title. Uh, Tyner might have the, uh, total description of what we're doing this. We're gonna adding some, some position and, and, and requirements to this position, so that would justify the increase going from a 34 to 38, and therefore submit this for your, for your, uh, Tyner, if you have any, any, can you go on this for?
Well, um, when it was, uh, proposed to us by the judge, the one thought that occurred to me, um, with regard to duties for this position was if, if I'm gonna be in this position for a little while, we have hurricane season coming up, and by virtue of this position, and actually, Judge, I'm still in the governmental affairs position. Uh, I'm just getting a pay supplement, just FYI. So the actual, uh, position of director is, is still open.
Okay.
And, and people have applied for that.
Okay.
Just FYI. So, um, frankly, by virtue of the position that I'm in, I need to get ready as operations chief. And, uh, in the event of, uh, disaster, hurricane. And, uh, the fact of the matter is, if, if, I wish Melissa was here, but it's my understanding that, um, if we are not, if we do not have the properly trained positions by FEMA, we, um, in the, the event of a disaster, we threaten the fear of not getting FEMA reimbursed during a disaster if we don't have the right trained people in the right, uh, positions. So if the court approves this going forward, uh, this particular person that, that the judge would hire would take over the public information officer responsibilities, take all the training to get the certifications uh, necessary to be public information officer in the emergency operations center. That doesn't mean I would continue to get y'all's news releases out or participate in that and probably have assistance of this individual going forward, but part of the rationale of doing some of this is to get ready for, um, the emergency operations center. Um, and, you know, as you know, June 1st is, uh, is approaching, and, you know, I don't know the direction of my position going forward, but one of the things I would start to do was to get, would be to get my training to be operations chief in the EOC.
So what, what are you saying? You're, you're concerned about the PIO part of this? The Public Information Office part of this job description?
Well, uh, yes.
You're raising the issue.
Yeah, I'm just raising the issue, and we did put the, put public information officer actually as part of the duties of the proposed position.
I think what he's saying is that this position that we're opening up is not going to be the way it used to be. It is going to be, which was much more clerical and administrative. This position is going to have some dual, actually triple duties, one of which is gonna be the new public informations officer, and the second would be emergency management liaison. Is that, is that correct? And that person would also receive training.
And then in addition, I don't know that, um, we got this late Friday.
And I have not seen it, so I'm reading.
The, the other thing that we have coming up that was proposed, it was actually Julie's, um, idea. Uh, we're coming up on collective bargaining, and we're, um, suggesting that this new position be, um, collective bargaining liaison um, on behalf of the court.
I like that, too. Yeah, the, the idea here is to be able to have a really, you know, comprehensive, um, employee in, in the judge's office, somebody who could handle a variety of important offices and also, well, be the type of, I suppose, executive that, that a modern court, you know, would need.
Yes, if you look on the top of page two, um, it will, will be the public information officer for emergency management. And then below that is, will serve as the lead liaison on behalf of Commissioner's Court for the collective bargaining team.
Well, you're asking one person to do an awful lot of things. I've got, I've got a lot of questions. Can I ask some, please?
Sure.
I wanna be very respectful, Judge, of you and your new position, cause I want you to get what you need to make you successful. But I'm always worried about money. So you went way too fast for me, Dale. So how much is the existing secretarial position? What was it?
The existing position is at an annual cost of $75,130,000, uh, $75,130 per year, annual.
Is that with vehicle allowance and all that?
No, that's just actually base salary.
That's base salary?
We're, we're not asking for an increase in, in car allowance or any other allowance, just the increase in salary.
Okay, and so what was the difference in, because I know the judge doesn't make what the previous judge made. What was the difference?
Well, the proposed salary increase would be to $84,822.
Which is around $9,000 more.
$9,690 increase in, in, in that. We're offsite, we're saying that there, there is a fiscal impact for that. However, uh, Judge Neal was at a pay group four because of his 12 years of service. So he was at $103,416. When Judge Gonzalez come, came in and started, she started a $96,032 annual salary, or $7,380, uh, reduction. So if y'all set those two together, it's about $2,600 fiscal impact.
Okay, um, I'm just curious for this position, cause I mean, I don't know, I'm new to the court as well. What do other counties do? I mean, do they have CEOs?
Um, I, I, I have not really checked other counties, but if, if it's similar to ours, or, and, and some of the ones I've seen, they have, uh, as, as most of your other departments have, they have chief deputies for everything, and, and as, as Commissioner Gonzalez also says, sometimes we have too many chiefs, not enough Indians, but, but, uh, sometimes, uh, uh, we feel that this position for the judge is, is necessary to, to do what they need to do, uh, with it being staff of just one, but with the added additional, uh, duties that, that Tyner had, had offered and said that covers the entire county and, and administration of, of the county is, as we think the position should be, so.
Okay, my concern is just this. Um, I wanna hear from you, because I wanna know your reasoning on why you wanna do this. But my concern is, we're asking this person to do a lot of stuff, and, and I'm not criticizing you, but, cause I think you have a lot on your plate. But I think one of the things that we've had in this county that is just terrible is PR. And it's not your fault, but I'm just saying, we do not have the PR we should get for this court, for this county over here. So that concerns me. And I, I could see that person doing that, because there is no way that, with the hats that he wore, that he could have done all of that successfully. Don't wanna be critical here. Um, and the emergency liaison, I mean, I don't know. I don't know, uh, how much they do, but I would like to hear from you, Judge, on the reasoning of, of the.
of, of the position.
Sure.
And I may have, might have misspoken, it's the public information officer for the emergency management board. I think I used the word liaison, but the, the correct is the public information officer. So in times of crisis, when we are in an emergency situation, when we have an operation command center up, this would be the person who would be sort of our PR person, and you, as you know, in Hurricane Harvey, there was a tremendous amount of media, tremendous amount of focus on getting accurate information out, not only to the public, but also to our employees and to the media. This would be the person who would sort of take the helm at that. So I say, so I guess what I'm going to say is, I might agree with you, we still need a PR person.
Yes, we do.
But that's not this person, in the sense of, this person, I think, would be, have the duty of public information officer in the times of emergency management. But we might expand that if that works out, you know, if it works out that we could test the waters with time, that she could, she or he could be somebody who, you know, could, could deliver information on a regular basis. But, you know, we don't even have a county website, so it's a, it's a strange world sometimes. As far as the collective bargaining, that's something that came from HR. Collective bargaining is coming up. I think that my question there would be what the demands would be, how many days a week or a month that would be, are you familiar with that? I'm looking around, but Julie's not here.
I can tell you.
Yeah, tell me, because I know you're on the.
This would have been what Steve was doing, and Steve was the one that was responsible for putting the notice out when we, when we met. It's all, has to be on a timeline. We have that timeline, and he's, he was part of the negotiating team as well as myself and, and others.
Okay.
And he, his role was, or this person's role was to promote or to pursue the, the county, the Commissioners Court or the county's position as far as negotiations. And, and a, a lot of it had to do with budget.
Right.
How much.
Right. Well, thank you for that, and, and that helps me to know that with somebody who also had a major duty to, I, I wouldn't want to put too much on this person who would be coming in brand new. I mean, that, that would make me nervous, but if it's something that Steve Waterman did, it sounded like it was obviously manageable for a person who was doing as much as he was. But let me start back at the beginning, and the reason that I felt when I looked at, at the pay scale, and the idea is really just to attract talent, I mean, that's the bottom line, is that people are always looking for opportunities to work in government, but often the pay scale doesn't allow for the talented people who already have great opportunities available them to, to come over. We, as public servants, try not to augment our own salaries, because we feel like it's the public's money, and we try not to infringe upon that. But when I looked at other counties, and you asked, you asked the perfect question, and the, and the answer is, is there are CEO-like, they're called county managers. And, you know, we don't really have one, we don't have really the organization that other major urban counties have, and perhaps what I'm hoping to establish is maybe a, a whole assessment and evaluation of how our sort of inner workings of the court administrator's office has. There's many judges that came before us that created that, you know, we just all inherited it. Tyner's done a great job of being able to work with all of the commissioners, and, my goodness, I, I mischaracterized you, so I had, forgive me that you're doing and pulling double and triple duty as also governmental affairs. I'm glad we are paying you for that, that's, that's important. But this position, I really see it as an opportunity to really conduct the economic development that I know we all want, and I don't need somebody clerical in that job. I really do need somebody that is, really comes from the business sector. And in order to do that, I felt that the delta of twenty-six, I got the advantage of not being high on the totem pole, so the difference of, of, in pay scale with nine thousand dollars is offset by my own pay scale, and so the delta of twenty-six hundred, I thought was well worth being able to attract the talent at that level. I thought that would probably create a little more interest, and I hope that it will be. In addition, I think by really assessing and evaluating the court administrator's office, and maybe even looking at a budget office at some time in the future, would allow us to make certain that as my pay scale goes up after three years, that we're constantly in balance of the budget. The idea here is not to go outside the line, but to stay within it. I think there's also some other things that, that we can do with my budget that would help try to negate that twenty-six hundred, but Dale and I have to start looking around and finding ways we can, we can save money. But I think the idea is, quite simply, attract the talent from the business sector and look at this as a business-focused job and not as a high, high-level clerical job. I do want the court to know that not even my office has Wi-Fi. We're working on that. Until this week, we did not have a computer system. We did not have the modern technology that any court, any county in, in the state of Texas in twenty nineteen has got to have. And that's just something that I'm, I'm playing catch-up to, and what I want to say about that is that we're not just modernizing physically, but I want us to modernize mentally about how we do business in the county. As you know, most of our money comes from property taxes, right? I mean, that's how we make our money here in, in this county, and in order to create our tax-based growth, we need to create opportunities for new businesses. So this position, I see it as a way to put somebody, really kind of put my money where my mouth is, or our money where my mouth is, I guess, and I thought that that delta was reasonable. And so that's, that's really the, the best argument that I can make for it, but I truly, I want it to be zero, but I couldn't get it to zero just yet. I got it to twenty-six hundred, and I'm, I'm, I really do want to work with you, Dale, some more, because there's got to be ways. It could be my car allowance, for instance. It could be anything that allows us to offset it, because the goal is, is to be able to stick to the fiscal budget that, that you all created.
Well, like I said, the total cost for salary-wise is twenty-six hundred, but there's some savings on the employee benefit side, because your salary has gone down, our retirement contribution is less. Hers is going up, hers a little bit, hers a little bit more, so, and theoretically, if you really look at the entire savings of everything, and it could be that other costs that are going to be a little bit less or more, depend on, on if, whoever comes in, if they want medical or not medical, if they want, you know, some other stuffs that, that we have for. So theoretically, if you look at everything, they're probably not going to be a very, very big change. We may be even get, get below a thousand dollars.
Well, that would be the goal. That would be the goal. But I do want everyone to have a new mindset, that the, the position that we're filling is changing from the position that was there. That, that would be the goal, and it would be to be more in keeping with other urban counties. We are part of the grade eight, and that's very exciting to have that distinction, and, and that's also part of the goal this week, is when we visit with the urban counties, to really sit down with their folks, and I don't think it's embarrassing to say, hey, help us, tell us how you guys do it, because we want to be considered one of the top urban counties in Texas on our form of government, as much as we do just having the distinction of having the population of one. Well, I appreciate you explaining. I think it's important for the public to hear it when there's a change, too. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I've got a question, Dale.
Yes.
Looking at eighty-four, with the position, eighty-four thousand?
I believe that's correct. There may be a little more.
Eighty-four thousand eight twenty-two, the eight, thirty-eight one, yes.
Okay, and then the position is ninety-three thousand for the judge's position?
The judge will be at, at a salary currently of ninety-six thousand thirty-two, thirty-two dollars. Starting salary, annual. Which is.
And that, that still goes up every third year, I guess?
Well, as long as the continuous pay is in our, our personal policy, yes. Every three years, there's a two and a half percent, unless the elected official determines to decline the increase, as y'all have done before.
And I'll do that, so that, that's an, again, an opportunity to, to forecast, right? We want to be able to forecast how we not just pay this year this particular salary increase, but how we continue to pay for the salary increase, you know, after, after, through the four years.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
I, I have no issue, I think this is probably, quite frankly, long overdue, assuming that, and again, that, that you're moving some responsibilities that Steve or and/or Tyner had, and I, and which kind of helps stand by the, the thought I had earlier, is I, I don't know that we need to fill the position that Steve once had, and especially if we're going to start doling out some of the responsibilities that Steve and/or Tyner had to this new person, so I think that's positive, and, and then if there's some other cost savings by not replacing Steve's position, then we could possibly look at some of the things that you talked about, like a budget office and some better allocation of the funds, so I, I applaud that effort. I do, I think Tyner did do a really good job as a public information officer for the emergency management board of Nueces County during the hurricane, and I do think we need to be cognizant of those FEMA requirements and some of those requirements going forward. However, I do think it makes sense, because the county judge is the emergency manage, manager for the county in times of disaster, so that person should report, so I, I think that makes sense. So I, I, I applaud all of that. The only question I have on this is, and I, and I read this real quick, was the lead liaison for the collective bargaining team. The collective bargaining is a court function, you know, we all have to agree on that, we all have to decide on that, we all have to be involved in that, so I guess my, my only question on that is, will there be some mixed loyalty there when the liaison for the collective bargaining team for the county has to report to the county judge, when in the past, that person has always had joint responsibility for all the commissioners? So that's the only one on here. I'm agreeing with your concept, I think everything's great. That's the only one I'm a little, don't know how to overcome, my.
Yeah, you know, I'm, this was an add-on. I'm okay with taking that piece of it out until we can, you know, further discuss. Julie was, was here, and, did you hear his concerns, Julie?
Come in, it could be the judge and commissioners, I mean.
And if there's a way to remedy it, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how to not have that person have mixed loyalties, because that person will work for the county judge and will have a pure responsibility only to the county judge, not to the rest of the court.
I understand your concern.
In fact, Judge, I was going to recommend at a future court, that this court actually appoint a commissioner to be on the collective bargaining team, a commissioner.
And that's separate and above, I mean, I don't, that's fine, whatever, but I, but that person may not agree. So i- if you're okay taking that part out, and then maybe revisiting it later or something.
I don't mind revisiting that later at all.
Just, I'm not trying to, I really, I'm like Commissioner Vaughn, I want this to work for you, and I want this to be good for you, the rest of this is great, I think what you're doing is great, I'm just, that's the only one that I can't figure out how to.
I think that one's not a problem.
I think Julie is willing to take that out, and then it's, it's a good point that you make, we want to make sure that we're being as transparent as possible, we don't want people to have the wrong impression there, so.
Okay, I appreciate that, that would be, other than that, I'm good.
I, I do have a question with regards to supervisory responsibilities. The first sentence basically says that this person directly supervises employees in the county judge's office and the county library. So I'm not sure if we're talking about the Kish Library and the other library, or all libraries, law library?
I believe that's the law library.
Under the law library, if I remember correctly, and I'll have to go back and look at the law, the law says that it supervised, the actual director, who, we have a director there, is supervised by the Corpus Christi bar. So I'm going to have to look at that issue. If it's the Kish Library and the other library, we have a, a director already on that, so.
No, I think it was meant to be the law library, so we can.
We can revise that as well.
I'll, I'll look at that to see.
That's fine, but let it be revised so that it can be posted. I mean, I don't mind telling you, I feel, you know, our office could, could use some more hands, so we would like to.
I was planning to post it today if it was.
Right.
Approved, so.
Where, where is that, Laura? Where is that, Laura?
Under the supervisory.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, got you. Okay, thank you.
Could I look at that?
Yeah, because it's county libraries.
I just didn't, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Easy peasy. I would move acceptance of this pending those, the one removal on the collective bargaining issue and pending the county law library.
Second.
Okay, having received a motion and a second, and any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, that motion carried.
Several courts ago, we brought in the federal equitable, equitable sharing agreement certification for the sheriff's office, as well as the constable precinct five, constable precinct, precinct three. At that time, we were not, had it available for the district attorney. Now we have the, the district attorney, several of the issues, why is, is, is they were changing employees of who can file the report, and sometimes when they do that, my staff has to call the federal government and get a, a change in, in a status for this, and sometimes that takes up to two or three weeks. So the reports have been, been finalized, we've, we've gone over the numbers that are there, they match the reports that we currently have available, and we submit this for your approval for the federal, federal equitable share agreement for the district attorney.
Okay, now, real slow. The report that we're having trouble getting through, that this DA, remember I called you one time about the DA?
Yeah.
So now, who's submitting the report? Is it still the DA?
The DA is, is doing that, but because of they have had some change in their staff, they were changing who could access the reports for the federal sharing agreement, but they can't just assign someone to do it. We have to call the federal government, get in a, a ID number for them, and sometimes that takes two to three days. Last time it took two weeks, because of how the federal government's going right now, so. Now we have them all set up, and they can file the reports correctly, so the numbers match what we have. Well, it's a little bit late now because of, of getting someone access to it, but, but there should be no problem now.
So this is whenever they have a seizure of drugs or whatever, that they share the proceeds?
Most of this is for money laundering through the federal, federal government.
Okay, and who, who oversees this? Who collects all of this stuff, and who, I mean?
The federal government works on the balances, and they work with the DA, and it's similar to what we do on, on our state awarded, when we have a case coming in from, from the sheriff's office, or, or the CCPD, or someone else, they give us the funds, and the DA prosecutes the case, and then the DA keeps ten or fifteen percent based on their agreement and gives the rest to the, the organization. The federal government does theoretically the same thing, when they prosecute there with their, with their federal attorneys, and then they'll say, who worked with giving us these, the money to be able to come in, and they, they distributed out this last, the last few times they had that task force that the, the DA just come up with, and then that dealt, dealt with a lot of drug seizures as well as money laundering.
Have we gotten very much?
Lately, we got eighty-five thousand dollars.
For the county?
Well, it goes to the DA, yes.
The DA, so the DA all has all of that, the sheriff's department, none, none of them get any of this.
The funds come to us for, for us to, to manage the funds for the district attorney, but so the district attorney to determine how the funds are to be used on the federal side, and, and, and some of the money is used for hiring some of the lawyers he has currently on staff.
Okay.
But they use sheriff's department manpower?
For their, for this DA, no. This is, they, they've got a investigator that, that, the, the task force side of it, they, they may have worked with some of the constables, and maybe, they may have worked with the sheriff's office at some point in time, but if that was the case, then the sheriff's office and the constable should have received funds, too.
I was going to say, but if, if they utilize those officers from the sheriff's department.
They would have got, they would have gotten funds, that's why we do have an agreement with the sheriff's office, constable five and constable three. And they've already filed their reports. I submit the federal equitable sharing agreement for the district attorney, so we can continue on the process of, of working with the, the DA, as well as the Department of Justice to, to, to have any case that comes up for, for, for federal equitable sharings.
Just want to make sure everybody gives a cheer.
Yes.
Do I have a motion? And a second? Second from Commissioner Modest. And any discussion? The court would like to recognize Sheriff Hooper is here with us, and we thank you for your good work. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. And those opposed, aye. And those opposed, same sign.
Item three, we had a delay in printing, so I wasn't able to get it to, to you at the time, as well as there were a few small errors, so at this time, I'd like to table item three, the November monthly expense report for November two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
And a second? And no discussion? All those in favor of tabling, and I guess you'll bring it back to us on the twenty-third?
It'll be on the next court. It'll be on the next court, yes, sir.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll get that report next time.
Item four is the budget change order number six for fiscal year 2018, 2019. There was supposed to be a capital project budget change order on this as well. Unfortunately, there was some disagreements with some of how the fundings were going to be done. So we pulled out the, the capital projects side of the budget change order, and that will be on the next court for the 23rd to make sure the numbers are in the right place. Some of the ones that we were trying to get the funds for were not in agreement with the Public Works, as well as other offices that, that had funds available that we had asked at, to give at the time. So we'll bring that next, next time. But so, budget change order number six, at the moment in time, there's only two departments on here requesting funds, that being the magistrate court for the general fund. And they're using money to pay for an interpreter that they have. When we did the last cut, cost board cuts, they took away all their interpreter costs fees. And now they finally remembered that they have to have it. So they're just moving a hundred dollars to cover that. They don't do a lot of interpreters for the magistrate court, because some of it's provided by our, our interpreters upstairs. But I believe this was for the, the sign, sign language as well for, for that. So it was a small amount, and they had the funds available. The ones for the coastal parks, the beach management, that seven thousand dollars is just to cover the professional services for consulting work for the British Petroleum deep water horizon restoration funding. The funds are there that they have, and temporarily moved to cover the professional services. And we submit these for your approval as, as budget change order number six.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion with regarding to these budget change orders? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. All right, your budget order is passed.
Thank you.
And Tyner, I'm just going to ask, because this is my first time, so you typically do your board appointments after executive session?
That's correct.
Wow, you really make them wait, huh? Okay. All right. Well, is there, let me ask this. Is there anybody here in the audience that is waiting for the board appointment? I mean, I, I don't necessarily see anybody, but if not, that's not a problem. But if you were here waiting, I would consider moving it up.
Do you know we have long, do we have a long executive session, or not?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we have a long executive session?
Um, not for, not, not on my side.
Okay. I just have, I just have to get my son to the doctor today, so I didn't want to be here for the coastal parks.
All right. And Tyner, for the purposes of the court, do you like beginning from public notice on the reading of everything? Public notice is given from there?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, I'll start there. Absolutely. Public notice is given that the commissioner's court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed on the agenda, when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 in the Texas Government Code. In the event the commissioner's court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer. In accordance with the authority of the Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, Section 551.071, 072, 073, 074, 074, 5, 076, 086, 087, the commissioner's court will hold an executive session to consult with attorney, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, respective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the commissioner's court may be, may in an open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. And at this time, we shall retire to executive session. Madam Clerk, it's 12:58, and we are coming back from executive session. We have no action at this time. And so we are going to go back into regular order and handle our board appointments. And Tyner, you're going to present three different, I believe, board appointments, coastal parks, council of governments, the COG, and, and Neoces County bail bond board.
I believe first you have coastal parks.
Correct.
And I believe you have applicants Janie Bell, Jim Needham, John White, Kimberly Zon Winton, Robert Paulson, Troy Adler, and Tyler Thorson.
That's correct. And I've had the chance to review all the resumes and all of the applicants submitted letters to the court expressing their interest to continue to serve in coastal parks. And just to remind everybody, this is a two-year term. And I look forward to meeting with all of them so that we can figure out what their short-term and long-term goals are.
Judge, I think they had a planning meeting coming up, and I asked them to contact you about getting on your schedule for that, too, in case you wanted to be included in that. I don't remember what the date is, but I'll ask Alyssa to get with Monica and see if she can get that to you, if you wouldn't want to participate in that. I know they'd love having you there.
Yeah, that would, that would be great.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve these?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye for the approval of the following members of the coastal parks board.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And the court, I'm sure, will establish communication with these folks, let them know that they were approved.
Margaret will do letters to, for the judge to sign.
Okay, wonderful. And now, under item B, is the coastal band council of governments, other very important board.
What we're doing here is, since you were coming in, Judge, I knew that we needed to get you, get you on the COG board. And we went through there and fixed everything. So we're recommending that the court, and this is not an application type of board, these are, you know, set up by appointments of the court's choice. So we're recommending that the court appoint County Judge Barbara Canales, Commissioner Carolyn Vaughn, Juan Pimentel, Maria Bedea, Melissa Mungia, and alternate Alyssa Weinhold, Natalie Ekstrom, Timothy Everest, and to add Daryl Keach as alternate for Lance Murphy.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. And any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
And this time of year, the commissioner's court appoints a county court at law, a county court at law judge for, on the Neoces County bail bond board. I've, I've been the judge's designee for 12 years, and I've been secretary for 12 years. But the recommendation, the way I understand it today, is the recommendation by the county courts is that y'all appoint Mark Warner.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the, the change, Tyner? My only question is that, I bet you are relieved? Are you happy to be relieved of duty?
I'm not relieved. I'm still secretary.
Oh, you're still the secretary?
Unless, unless you want to designate somebody else, Judge.
No, I'm just wondering how many job titles one man can have in this county. Quite a few, I guess.
We might be able to find some.
Yeah, we'll find some more, Judge.
If there's no further discussion, Judge Warner will be our designee then on that Neoces County bail bond board. And all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And all opposed, same sign. And we now have a new member of the bail bond board. And it's hard to believe, only three hours later, but we have now terminated, finished our meeting, and four hours later, sorry. Oh, that's right, we started at nine, that's right. Time passes so fast, Commissioner, when you're having fun. This is something that I know that is unique to this court. You adjourn in memory of people who have gone. And Commissioner Chesney, would you like to start?
Yes, Judge, I have two. The first one is Isabel Hartman. Isabel Hartman was the mother of Melody Cooper, of which many of us, if not all of us, know. She entered her eternal rest on December 14th, 2018, at the age of 93. And condolences to the family from Isabel Hartman. Also Leonard John Wykem. Mr. Wykem passed away at 93. His son is the baseball coach, actually, at Flower Bluff. So condolences to the Wykem family on the loss of those two individuals, or those individuals for both families. Sorry.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, I have three or four here. First one I have is Israul Gonzalez Garcia, passed away on December 6th, 2018. He was a 1960 Miller High School graduate, once a buck, always a buck, where he excelled academically and was class president. He earned a baseball scholarship to Baylor University. He briefly interrupted his college studies to serve our country. He was a Vietnam veteran, United States Army. After earning his degree, he taught at St. Edward's University, and was a professor at the University of Texas for several years. He will be missed by his family and friends. And I know his family members and friends are here today. And our prayers, his brother to Diana Sepulveda, a very, very dear friend. And our prayers and peace continues to go out to the Garcia family and all of the family members. Our condolences go out to you.
I echo that as well. Deanna.
San Juanita Rodriguez passed away on December 19th, 2018. Sister-in-law of Dominga Flores, Mrs. Rodriguez was from Santa Rosa, a small community. And she will be missed. And prayers go out to the family. Luciano Leal Jr. passed away on December 19th, 2018. Luciano was a master electrician, was the owner of J.R. Electric Company. And also he was my wife's cousin, and he will be missed. And our prayers go out to the family. Barbara Klein passed away on December 21st, 2018. Ms. Klein was active in girl scouting. She devoted 50 years as a volunteer, committed and dedicated to politics. She was the first female Neoces County Democrat Party chair, served on several committees, and was the longest-serving precinct chair with more than three decades of service. She will be missed by those, her friends and family members, and her prayers go out to them.
Thank you. Commissioner Modest?
Yes, I want to echo also the loss of Barbara Klein. She was a, a good friend over many years. She loved this community fiercely. And she always thought about the next generation, and how she could mentor and support them to, to help take, take the lead and take charge in our community. And so I'm proud to have called her a friend and support her, and, and to have learned and worked under her for, for one year, actually. So of course, thoughts and prayers for Barbara, and of course, all her family and friends who cared dearly for her, so.
Thank you. And I, too, have a few that I just wrote down. Of course, I echo the loss of the icon Barbara Klein. And was recently informed over the weekend of the loss of Sinia Montoya's mother, Mrs. Godoy. And prayers go out to her and her family. In addition, a very wonderful member of the bar passed away, and that's Larry Coffey. And then a great University of Texas advocate and wife of attorney Ben Donnell, and that's Eleanor Donnell, who passed away over the holidays as well. So some great Neoces County citizens that we've lost, and we honor their memory and pray for their families and comfort them in whatever small way we can here at Neoces County, knowing that we were better because they lived here amongst us. So thank you, commissioners, for making the first meeting memorable. When I journal this, I'll remember to journal the, the tissues, the five Ricolas, 32 ounces of Gatorade, and the patience that you showed me. So I very much appreciate it. I look forward to continuing to do the business of the county with you every two weeks, and maybe sometimes in between then on special meetings. But I think it was a good and fruitful and efficient first meeting. And I thank all of you for helping me through each and every segment. Most of all, a little recognition from the court to you, Tyner, who really just, you can't imagine from the outside looking in, how much work you do to prepare for these agendas, to get the judge and commissioners ready. And I just, not one, I'm a detail freak, and not one thing escapes me on all that you do to help keep us on track, organized, and most importantly, prepared. So many, many thanks, and lots of good work ahead for us. Let's get ready for a great legislative session, and let's be prepared. So, thank you. Thanks, everybody. We are officially adjourned. This is here for a reason.
We can rise.
We can rise.
For the adjournment for a few moments?
Uh-huh. I think that sounds like an order. We'll do it. And now we are officially adjourned.